She's not going to be here. All right, calling the May 23th Pedaluma City Schools Board of Education meeting to order at 5:04. All right, we are acknowledging AV361. We're still in the hybrid fashion. Are there any comments from the public on closed session items?
No attendees.
All right, we are going to adjourn to closed session. Convening at 6:05. Next up is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. All right, special recognitions, reports, and presentations. We have students of the semester for Petaluma Accelerated Charter School.
Sophia is a delightful student having class. She's so kind and so happy to be learning. Sophia cares deeply about her academic achievements and does not just focus on her grades, but makes sure she learns and understands new concepts. She is one who self-advocates and isn't bothered by the extra time or steps it may take to understand the topic. It is this positive attitude that drives Sophia to ask questions and seek teacher feedback in order to improve her work. While Sophia is very studious, she's also extremely friendly and enters the classroom with a smile and a hello. We have watched Sophia gain so much confidence this year. She has really figured out how to be a successful student and has met her personal goal of keeping a 4.0 this semester. Sophia is also a very talented artist. She can sing, play instruments, draw beautifully, and has a newly found talent in filmmaking. Sophia's mind is capable of creating and helping herself learn during the process, and it's neat to witness her skills. Sophia took part in the PACS leadership class and loved every minute of helping her on campus. She's a natural positive leader to her peers and younger students. Sophia was accepted into Technology High School, and she'll start her new school in the fall. We're so proud of her accomplishments. Sophia's parents shared, "Our Sophia, let me tell you, she's not just a dreamer. She doesn't put on her pajamas and wait for her dreams to come true." True. She knows that making them a reality takes more than wishful thinking. You see, she had a goal to graduate with all As and knew it would be a long journey to the top. And let me tell you, she just kept putting one foot in front of the other, even when her legs were begging for a vacation. She even started waking up at the early hour of 5:00 AM to have some quiet time for her studies. Who knew mornings could be so productive? I'm still trying to figure out how to function properly with a cup of coffee at a much later hour. But hey, Sophia didn't stop at being an academic superstar. She decided to showcase her skills in other areas, too. She took on swimming, making waves in the pool like a graceful dolphin. And as if that wasn't enough, she conquered the world of piano and learned the Level 6 and earned the Level 6 Certificate of Merit with Honors. I can barely play chopsticks without causing a musical catastrophe. We, as parents, can be prouder of our ambitious achiever. Sophia has proven that hard work, dedication, and a reliable alarm clock can lead to incredible success. Her achievements inspire us and us all and remind us that with the right mindset and discipline, we can conquer anything. Sophia, the dream getter and the best daughter and sister anyone could ask for. May your journey continue to be filled with laughter, success, and a few well-deserved naps. And of course, PACS is so thankful to have Sophia as a student at our school. Congratulations. We are thrilled to present Jun-Lan Tang with the Student of the Semester Award. Jun-Lan is a dedicated student who consistently excels in all subject areas. Throughout this semester, Jun-Lan's hard work, determination, and commitment to excellence have set her apart from her peers. Her thirst for knowledge and ability to produce high-quality work is truly impressive, evident in her meticulous presentation of math concepts, strong literary responses, thorough organization of essays, and strong application of scientific principles in her labs and projects. It is not just Jun-Lan's academic achievements that make her a remarkable student. Her patience in explaining complex concepts to her peers and her kindness in offering support and encouragement make her an invaluable classmate and partner. In addition to her outstanding performance in academics, Jun-Lan has particularly shined in robotics this year. Her passion for this field has been evident in the remarkable construction and coding project she has undertaken, which earned her the well-deserved Best Robot Design Award at the recent countywide robotics competition. Jun-Lan's parents shared that Jun-Lan has had great teachers ever since she started elementary school. They set expectations high for her and encouraged her to jump to reach for it. Over the years, Jun-Lan built up the understanding that to reach higher requires hard work. She takes study seriously and makes an effort to finish every project well. She's very engaged in school activities, loves the responsibilities, and is very accountable for her assignments. Jun-Lan's grandpa resides in Shanghai. He's a professor and engineer who is very fond of math. Unfortunately, due to prevailing travel restrictions, Jun-Lan has been unable to meet her grandpa in person for the last three years. During their weekly video calls, discussing what she learned in math class and solving math problems together became a joyful event between the two. Through these conversations, Jun-Lan saw the fun of math and was encouraged to study well on this subject. It is with great pleasure that we recognize Jun-Lan's achievements and present her with the Student of the Semester honor. Congratulations on this accomplishment, Jun-Lan.
All right, thank you. And next up, we have Students of the Month for Kenilworth, Petaluma Junior, Casa, and Petaluma High.
Kenilworth would proudly present Anna Koneko. Anna was chosen Student of the Month because she is one of Kenilworth's kindest, hardest-working, and most inspirational students. Impressively, Anna has maintained a 4.0 grade point average her entire time at Kenilworth, even as her courses have become more and more challenging. Anna's teachers were universal in their praise of this fine student. Ms. Rutter, Anna's math teacher, shared, "Anna is an utter delight. She is always kind and caring towards everyone around her." "Ho, ho, work is probably the best done out of all my students. Anna has never cut corners and excels at everything in math." Anna's history teacher, Mr. Cantua, added, "Anna is an absolute pleasure to have in this class. She is more than deserving of this award." Not only is Anna a consistent and outstanding student, but she is also a talented musician and artist. Anna has been taking piano lessons for several years now and is looking forward to continue with them in the future. In Anna's free time, she also enjoys drawing and reading. As a triplet, it cannot be overstated what a kind and caring sister she is to two of her brothers, Nolan and Liam. After high school, Anna would like to travel Japan and sample the food there. Anna would also like to go to college and either become a nurse, veterinarian, or animator. Anna will be missed by everyone who knows her at Kenilworth. Congratulations, Anna.
Next, we would like to introduce Navya Singh. Navya has been chosen Student of the Month because of her academic excellence and her exemplary citizenship. A 4.0 student at Kenilworth, Navya has been described by her teachers as hardworking, a positive role model, and a pleasure to teach. Along with Navya's academic excellence, she's been a valuable member of the COLT's yearbook staff for two years and has served as an assistant editor. Ms. Romano, Navya's yearbook teacher, enthusiastically shared, "Navya embodies what it means to be a Kenilworth COLT. She thinks outside the box to complete tasks, and she's very creative. She makes sure that she meets all deadlines and consistently asks questions because Navya does not just want to do the job, she wants to do the job right. Navya can always be counted on to go above and beyond in all that she does. Navya is also a wonderful person. She radiates kindness, sensitivity, and thoughtfulness. In Navya's free time, she enjoys playing volleyball and badminton with her family. After high school, Navya would like to attend college somewhere close to home, ideally Stanford University. In the fall, Navya will be attending Technology High. Navya has had a great two years at Kenilworth and has impressed all the adults who have been lucky enough to call her their student. We are confident Navya has a bright future ahead of her. Congratulations, Navya."
Petaluma Junior High is proud to introduce our maest- Sorry. Okay. Petaluma Junior High is proud to introduce our Maesturian of the Month, Dominic Fontana. Dominic was selected this month for being a kind, hard-working, and responsible student. Ms. Peterson, Dominic's science teacher, notes that Dominic knows that when he will be out for a baseball game, he always makes sure to get his work done in advance, rather than just trying to catch up when he returns. When asked to describe what he enjoys most about Petaluma High School, Dom cites "learning new things and hanging out with friends." Outside of school, Dominic stays very active. He plays football, basketball, and baseball. His passion is clearing baseball, and he spends a lot of time working to be a better baseball player. He also volunteered with the Special Olympics program at our school, where he played alongside students with special needs, both on the basketball court and the track. When working with Special Olympics, Dominic shares that he enjoys playing alongside his classmates and seeing their smiling faces, having so much fun. Dominic will be attending Petaluma High School next year, where he's looking forward to getting to know the campus, learning new things, and meeting new people. He also plans to play sports for the Trojans, where he'll be working hard with the hope of one day playing baseball in college. Congratulations, Dominic.
I will be reading it in both Spanish and English. Petaluma Junior High is proud to introduce our Maesturian of the Month, Yama Lethaluna. Yama Lethaluna's teachers nominated her this month due to her kindness, her helpfulness, and her delicacy and her positive sense of humor. Yama Lethaluna's science teacher, Ms. Peterson, shares, "Yami makes me smile every day. She has been such a ray of sunshine as well as a dedicated hard worker. I have been lucky to have her in my class this year." Yama Lethaluna enjoys her time at PJHS and notes that her English class is a particular favorite. Yama Lethaluna loves having Ms. Mantuani as an English teacher because her class is always fun. She is wanting to learn more, and she enjoys participating in class conversations. Yama Lethaluna also plays the trumpet for the PJHS band. When asked to identify what she's most excited about for high school, Yama Lethaluna says that she's looking forward to meeting new people, participating in challenging classes, and learning new things. After high school, Yama Lethaluna would like to go to law school in order to one day become an immigration lawyer. Las maestras de Yama Lethaluna nomina en este mes debido a su humabilidad, su diligencia, y su positivo sentido del humor. Ms. Peterson, la maestra de ciencia de Yama Lethaluna, comparte que Yami me hace sonreír todos los días. Ella ha sido un rayo de sol, así como una gran trabajadora dedicada. Ha tenido la suerte de tenerla en mi clase este año. Yama Lethaluna disfruta su tiempo en PJHS. Ella nota que su clase de inglés es una de sus favoritas. Yama Lethaluna le encanta tener a Ms. Mantuani como la maestra de inglés porque su clase siempre es divertida. Siempre se va con ganas de aprender más y disfruta participar en las clases, en las conversaciones de la clase. Yama Lethaluna también toca la trompeta para la banda de PJHS. Cuando se le pide que identifique qué es lo que más le emociona de Petaluma High School, Yama Lethaluna dice que ella espera conocer gente nueva, participar en clases de dificultades, y aprender cosas nuevas. Después de la escuela secundaria, a Yama Lethaluna le gustaría ir a la Facultad de Derecho para algún día hacer abogada de emigración. Congratulations, Yama Lethaluna.
Hello, my name is Rona Hanson, and I am next year's Casa Grande ASP president. Our first Student of the Month is Emma Olson. Emma Olson is a senior at Casa Grande and has lived in Petaluma all her life. Her favorite subjects in school are English and government. Outside of school, she likes to hang out with friends and spend time outdoors, read, volunteer, and travel. After graduation, Emma plans to attend UC San Diego to study political science with a focus in international relations. She hopes to find a job in the realm of foreign policy and is excited for what is to come after high school. Congratulations, Emma. I don't believe he's here, but our next Student of the Month is Evan De Rojo-Vich. Evan De Rojo-Vich is a senior at Casa Grande High School. He is passionate about learning new things, making new friends, and exploring new places. He plans to major in cognitive science or applied mathematics at one of the University of California campuses, where he hopes to pursue his interests in these processes. One of the most important lessons he learned in his life was from his mom on his first day of kindergarten. She told him to always follow the golden rule, "Treat others the way you want to be treated." This simple but powerful idea has guided his interactions with people and inspired him to make a positive difference in the world. In his spare time, he enjoys spending time with his friends and family, playing video games, watching videos online, and listening to music. Congratulations, Evan.
My name is Ava Staub, and I am Petaluma High's ASP president. We have two Student of the Months, Finn Veloz and Veronica Richardson. So we'll start off with Finn. Finn is a bright and talented student who has always had a fascination with the world of computers. He has taken numerous advanced computer science courses and is constantly pushing the boundaries of his knowledge. He enjoys challenging himself with complex problems and approaches each new challenge with enthusiasm and determination. Finn is excited to continue his academic journey at UC Santa Cruz, where he will be studying computer science in the fall. Apart from his academic pursuits, Finn is an accomplished athlete and a standout soccer player. His dedication to the sport is evident in his constant practice and team spirit. Finn's love of soccer is matched only by his love of learning, and he finds great joy in balancing both his academic and athletic pursuits. He is a well-rounded student with a multitude of interests and talents. He is always willing to lend a helping hand to his classmates, whether it's by providing academic support or simply being a listening ear. He hopes to use his skills and resources to make a positive impact on society and to help create a better future for all. Up next, we have Veronica Richardson. Veronica Richardson is a senior at Petaluma High School. She's an involved student both at school and in her local community. She participates in lacrosse, but she was captain as a fourth-year varsity returner. She plays corner for her senior flag football team as well as playing varsity golf. Outside of school, Veronica volunteers at Miracle League North Bay, where she runs the snack shack and assists volunteers with jobs and guidance. She does the bookkeeping, inventory, and buying, as well as organizing the files and keeping track of the paperwork for volunteers and players. In Veronica's free time, she loves spending time with her friends and family and doing day trips to new places and towns. She loves going to Tahoe with her family and going on hikes and boating trips. She also loves to travel because she loves being immersed in different cultures. Veronica is very grateful for her family and friends because she would have never been here without them. She will be attending Santa Barbara City College in the fall.
Great, congratulations, everyone, and thank you to all of our readers. Amazing job, as always. So next up, we're going to introduce the new principal and assistant principal at Petaluma Junior. And yay, and then we will introduce our new secondary administrative intern, and then we'll take a break so all of our students can go home. So I hear some eager people in the audience. So is this you, Jason?
Yeah.
All right.
So I'd like to first invite Ray McClintock up to the podium. We are pleased to announce the assignment of Ray McClintock as the new principal of Petaluma Junior High School. Ray will assume his duties on July 1st, 2023. Ray began his tenure as a PCS administrator last year as the assistant principal of Petaluma Junior High School. Before that, Ray spent six years as a social science teacher at Terra Linda High School. In that position, he was lead teacher for the Marin School of Environmental Leadership Program. Simultaneous, Ray also served as the athletic director at Petaluma High School for the three years. Ray graduated with distinction from Sonoma State University with a bachelor's in sociology. He then earned a single-学位 teaching credential and master's in education from UC Davis. Finally, he earned his administrative credential and master's in education administration from Marin Leadership Institute, San Francisco State University. Ray is born and raised Petaluman, who cares deeply for the community. He's a product of PCS and attended McKinley, Kenilworth, and Casa Grande. Ray married his high school sweetheart, Lindsay, who is a teacher at Pengrove Elementary. They live with their three-year-old daughter, Delilah, and are expecting their second child this fall. In their spare time, they love gathering with family, friends, and seeing students and families out and about in Petaluma. Ray is looking forward to building on the tradition of PJHS and will continue to prioritize relationships with students, staff, and families as he takes over the role of principal next year. Ray is excited to work with a knowledgeable, experienced staff in ensuring that PJHS is a safe, inclusive, and welcoming for all. Ray's immediate goals for PJHS include expanding elective offerings and student activities and working on bridging programs between PJHS and PHS to increase unique learning opportunities for students. Ray also hopes to help strengthen the positive culture on campus through PBIS and restorative practices. Please join us in welcoming Ray McClintock as the new principal at Petaluma Junior High School.
Thank you. I feel like I was just here about a year ago. First and foremost, I'd be remiss if I did not start with some thank yous. Firstly, Matthew, the board, cabinet, Amy, our wonderful staff, our wonderful students, my wife, Lindsay. I'm pretty sure my mom is on Zoom, my mom. Ms. Dinde, the principal this year, who I learned so much under. I am just surrounded by such a fantastic community. As you guys see from the students that presented here, the families that are here, we are blessed at Petaluma Junior High School. I'm so thankful for the opportunity. A year ago, I stood here scared to death, but also so excited, and that has not changed this year. I am so grateful for this opportunity, and together, we're going to make Petaluma Junior a fantastic school. Thank you all.
Ray, I'm not sure if you caught the student reaction. They were just so happy for you. That says a lot about your leadership.
So with Ray moving from the assistant principal position to the principal position, that left a vacancy, and we do want to introduce at this time the new AP for Petaluma Junior High, which is Teri Filippo. I promised that I wouldn't give her a full formal reading of her life history, but just a minute. Teri isn't new to the role of AP. She served this year as an AP at Petaluma High School, but we are excited to announce that she's moving over to Petaluma Junior High, and we are looking forward to seeing this dynamic duo in action this year. You don't need to say anything, Teri. Just wave.
Thank you. I'm super excited.
Jason let you off easy. I was going to make you say something, but it's all good. All right, congratulations. Up next, introduction of the new secondary administrative intern.
So we'd like to invite Katie Pischiota to the front. We are excited to announce Katie Pischiota as the new administrative intern for secondary. Katie will assume her duties on July 1st, 2023. Katie grew up in Southern California, playing lacrosse in high school, and then again in college at Sonoma State. And while at Sonoma State, Katie met her husband, Chris, and moved back to Southern California to start their family. Three years ago, Katie relocated back to Sonoma County with Chris and their two children. Her son Zach is five years old and currently a kindergartner at Pengrove. Haley is four years old and will be attending TK at Pengrove next year. Katie received her bachelor's degree in literary analysis from Sonoma State and her master's degree in teaching from USC. She began her teaching career at Longdale High School in 2013, where she served as an English teacher, curriculum lead, and dean leading PBS and restorative practices. Katie then joined the Casa Grande High School staff in 2020 as an English teacher and then became the Activities Director, co-department chair, and journalism advisor. As the administrative intern for secondary, Katie is looking forward to building relationships with students, staff, and family throughout Petaluma. She has a passion for PBIS and restorative practices and is excited about helping the district implement these systems. Most of all, Katie hopes to be an effective advocate and support for our district teachers. When asked about her goals, Katie's first thought was of making her casa student proud. On a bigger scale, Katie hopes to make a difference for students and staff and help PCS continue to grow and flourish. Katie lives in Rohnert Park with her family. She loves camping and spending time with her family. And Katie builds on her skills as an amateur charcuterie board arranger. Did I get it? Okay. You can follow her on Instagram at Pischiota Rocks. Please join us in congratulating Katie Pischiota in her new role as administrative intern for secondary.
Thank you, and I have to correct you, especially because his teacher is here. Zach is actually six years old today. Yes, it's a big year. It's a big year. But thank you. I am absolutely so excited to be able to join this leadership team. And I think that what's making it feel the most right is when Matthew told me, "Okay, you can tell your inner circle." My first two inner circle I told were my two amazing ASP students. And rather than tears, they just gave me a big hug and they said, "We're so proud of you. We can't wait to see what you're going to do next." And that just made this step so much easier. So thank you. And that just made this step so much easier. So thank you. Oh, and Amy. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we will take a five-minute break. Oh, students, can you please come up for a picture? Sorry. All the students of the month. All right, next up, school plans for student achievement presentation.
Stand up here because I have two other presentations, so I figured I'll just stick up here for a little while. School plans for student achievements. The school plan for student achievement, or otherwise known as SIPSA, is a document that represents a school cycle of continuous improvement. And it is an annual process developed and reviewed and updated annually, including a comprehensive review of data and the development of actions necessary to achieve the school goals. So our SIPSA is required. Under ESSA, under every Student Success Act, schools that operate federal programs are required to have SIPSA, such as Title I Schools. Schools that have been identified for comprehensive support and improvement, or CSI, or additional targeted support improvement, ATSI, also required to have a plan in place. And of course, if a district requires schools to have a plan, those are schools that will be required to have SIPSA. So essentially, requirements within the SIPSA needs to have a needs assessment. They need to determine how they will develop their goals. There needs to be stakeholder involvement, representation of their parent community, goals, strategic actions and services, and proposed expenditures within the plan. And the process is developed by their school site council. So school plans are essentially school plans developed by the school and their local communities and from there meet all the requirements under the SIPSA guidelines and then brought to the board for approval. Any questions? Yes.
Any questions?
I think one thing that I do want to emphasize is SIPSA's are not the easiest thing to write, especially with a lot of new administrators we have. It's a continuous area of growth for us. I think the pandemic, there was a lot of less oversight in regards to them. But again, they are school site responsibilities, and they are school site council's main responsibility. And as we move forward, those are the areas that Ed Services will help focus on and support the school site council in helping improve and continually improve their school plans.
Tony, maybe you can just give us an overview of the general process that these plans are produced. And then maybe if you can characterize, you know, the themes that you see running through these plans across the schools.
Well, in August, we provided the school sites guidelines in regards to the timelines, general timelines that we would like the plans to be reviewed and discussed with our school site council. The challenges has been, at least in last year, was finding school site councils and finding parents to serve on the school site councils. And people, I know that last year we were going, exiting out of a pandemic, so it was difficult for them. And even this year with new administrators has been challenging for that process. But that is one of the key and main processes of the SIPSA, is establishing a school site council so that they can begin looking at the needs assessment, which is the data that we see in our dashboards and things that we might review in our SARC that's available in our SARC. And all the data that we've reviewed throughout the year to help kind of identify where their needs are, where their challenges are. And as a school site, determine where they will focus and develop their goals to help, you know, increase student achievement based on the needs that they're determining. So themes are different throughout schools because school sites may have different needs, depending on the school. Ideally, we want them to align it with our LCAP, with our bare goals, where they see that it easily fits with their current goals or their schools that they're developing at their school sites. So it's hard to pinpoint any particular theme, though one theme you may see is students with disabilities because that is a big piece that we want to move as a district, but also a requirement since we are under differentiated assistance.
I wonder if, I'm kind of surprised that's challenging to get family involvement on these plans because the contents of them, you know, I think would, you know, attract a lot of attention, you know, especially with the achievement gaps that they report. I'm wondering, you know, these plans are like 7,000 pages long. Is there a way to communicate the, you know, a synopsis of these plans to each site as a recruiting tool for, you know, school site councils and parent engagement so that we can get, you know, as many people as possible focused on these improvement plans as opposed to, you know, a small group at each school?
Yeah, definitely something that we can improve on for next year. I know one thing we're looking at is the template itself is a lot of information that doesn't necessarily need to be there. Some of it's already in the SARC. So we're actually reviewing the current template and simplifying it, making it much more user-friendly and easier to read and seeing how we can improve that piece. Because I think in some ways, a template can be a little confusing, especially if you're trying to write certain components. And there's certain requirements that need to be in the template that sometimes can be overlooked because there's a lot of narratives that are required in there. But really, aside from some of the boilerplate language that we might see in the beginning pages, it's those goals and actions that will be really important and how they justify their goals based on the needs that they've identified at their school site. But yes, you know, how we can support schools, making sure that there's ample representation of their community, even at the junior high and high schools having student representatives as well, along with their teachers and other staff, will be important. I know some schools have been more successful at it than others, and some schools have been able to meet regularly with their school site councils. But I think another challenge is the school site councils in itself aren't too familiar with the SIPSA and what their responsibilities are. And that's just one area that we need to help and make sure that they understand. We can't go in and tell them what their goals should be or how they should write their goals, but we can guide them into how they can look at their needs to help develop their goals. And it's essentially a multi-year plan. It's something that they don't necessarily need to change drastically every year unless there's a reason to change drastically.
I mean, remember last year, you know, we asked, you know, parents to read your site's plan because there's a lot of information there that should concern all of our parents. Maybe we can, I wonder if we can do this through Parent Square, you know, with a synopsis of, you know, the schools that are relevant to each parent. Just say, you know, our SIPSA is now online, please read it. Here's a synopsis of five key things that we're trying to achieve at our school. Please help us, you know, get involved and help us with this.
And, you know, during coffee with the principals, during PTA meetings, PTSA meetings, those are good opportunities to reinforce some of those opportunities to read the SIPSA or just share with what's in the SIPSA or the process they're in currently and what support the school sites would need for that.
Yeah, you kind of answered my question. I was wondering about the accountability piece, like, I mean, I know we have these goals that are on each of them, but then who's, like, how are we monitoring?
In regards to their SIPSA?
That's my question as well.
So the, so the school sites every year should be reviewing their own SIPSA's and their goals. The data that we, that we'll see is from what we'll see in the dashboard that we get every year as well, from their cast to graduation rates to any other areas that we can help identify areas of need. So it's, the process really lies within the school sites to monitor their own plans and to make sure that they are holding themselves accountable to meeting those goals and plans. As a district, we'll review them as well. But to what, to, you know, what extent we dictate certain things for them is is something we try not to do because it's a local plan that they develop. But we will look at how our LCAP data is showing and if we have identified schools with particular needs is when we may take a look closer at their SIPSA to see if they are, you know, making any appropriate goals and actions that will support the overall student achievement at our district.
So did these get submitted to the county or the state? They're just internal for Petaluma City Schools?
They're local, yes. They're local, but for schools that receive Title I funds, technically cannot spend those dollars unless it's been board-approved. So their school site council must sign off on it first, and then the board must approve it. So the process really should go through the school site council to review and approve their plan, and then they bring it to the board for approval. And then that's really tied to our larger LCAP plan that we bring to the county office, who approves it on their end.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I mean, I have some comments, but to probably wait till later on when we discuss under action items. But I guess I'm just wondering if you were to see something that you felt like wasn't addressed because maybe there's like not those, that subgroup present in the school site council or what have you. How do you address those things that are glaring, that may be missing from the SIPSA based on the data that's presented?
Yeah. We try to address those through our larger conversations we have with our LCAP, with, you know, meetings we have with our site administration and our continuous improvement committee to help look at those bigger areas of focus and how they might translate into what's happening at the school sites as well. So, you know, as we try to guide how the district moves, the general idea is that the school sites take that and bring it down to their school at their local level and determine if those are also needs as well. And oftentimes, we'll help identify those areas. But whether or not the school site council, looking at their own particular data, determines that as a need or a goal is something that's part of their process. And knowing that they continually can continually improve in those areas is just something that we need to continually make sure that we can keep a pulse on and help them continually improve in those areas. And, you know, as we move forward, I think it's one of those things where we know that it's an area of growth. We have a lot of new administrators who are still trying to figure out their role as administrators, but also the huge responsibility of how these SIPSA's really can be a really important document, not just because it's part of their responsibility, but how they can use the document as a way to really focus and be strategic in regards to what they do to address their needs of their students, especially particular student groups who may not be, who may be hiding underneath, you know, a lot of the data that we don't typically pay attention to. So it's a good opportunity if we can help build that kind of muscle into looking at, using it as a tool to look for inequities, but also as a tool to be strategic about how we move forward and help all of our students.
Any questions, comments? All right, thank you. Next up, arts and music committee presentation.
Arts and music presentation, you know, that's Ryan to pull that up. Okay, two more fun presentation. Arts and music discretionary block grant and our arts implementation plan. We'll start off with a little video. So as you might have noticed, we have some really incredible artists in our community. And some of our students have shown exceptional talent in the arts. And I think the video is just a small testament to what we can do as a community when we come together and the amazing things that we can do in support of, of the arts. This year, we've had an amazing opportunity to bring, you know, wonderful people together to develop our arts and music implementation plan. They're comprised of teachers, site administrators, parent community partners, district administrators and board representatives as a part of that committee. Actually, I would like to recognize those that are here as a part of the committee. If you could just kind of stand up and. And quite honestly, they, you know, we couldn't have done this work without all of them, their contributions, their time out of their, their lives, especially late at night sometimes to really put this together was something that I want to make sure they recognize and commend it for. So the focus with the committee was really, you know, creation of a visual and performing arts implementation plan that aligns with the instructional, the arts and music instructional discretionary block grant and Prop 28. And the focus areas of that plan are the teaching and learning. And these are the kind of the four main areas, teaching and learning, arts leadership and development, communication and advocacy, arts funding and resources. And our priority for next year is really adding elementary VAPA specialists and supporting them with a VAPA chair person and providing San Antonio with visual and performing arts teacher, which we know that they're, they have been lacking and making sure that the, the programs and the teachers receive the supplies they need to, to carry on with the arts program. So those are our big priorities for, for this coming next year. So, so a part of the arts, music instructional materials discretionary block grants provided us with a lot of funds to support many different areas and, including the arts. Originally, we had about 4.4 million, but unfortunately that was cut in half. So originally we were going to fund a lot of other things as well. And including the arts, but I mean, majority of it was the arts, but based on how the funding has, has been, has been kind of reduced in half. We still wanted to show that we were committed to the arts. And so taking whatever money was left and really moving it towards the arts completely so that we can, you know, commit the money that we have to support what, what was in the implementation plan that we developed. So the planned expenditures are really, you know, adding that elementary visual performing arts specialist teacher, PCS VAPA chair, teacher at San Antonio and, and supplies and resources to keep the programs running. And as you can see, elementary is receiving about 477,000 and secondary was receiving 1.4 million, which is half of what we originally thought we were going to get. So Prop 28 will help cover the other costs within our plan. So 80% of the dollars that we get from Prop 28 needs to go towards funding new positions, which is a great because the specialists that we, we want to hire will, will come from there as well as the teacher at San Antonio High School, in addition to, you know, supplies in other areas. Prop 28 requires a plan, which is the arts, music implementation plan. But we don't know exact amount of funding until next year, but we're approximating about 240,000 for elementary and 641,000 for secondary. And this is ongoing, ongoing funding. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Tony. And I also want to commend the committee. It was an amazing group to work with. And I want to thank Erin for her incredible notes and Dave for putting a lot of it together. It was a really great experience.
Yeah, this was a huge lift by so many teachers and administrators and community members and parents. And just only being able to be tangentially involved, but always reviewing the plans at whatever hour they were sent out. It's just really incredible to see and, you know, I think it's something that a lot of us out in the community or as students or as parents that are a little less involved, just assume is there and just assume happens. No, it takes a lot of work and a lot of effort. And hopefully this can be a blueprint for not just the next three years, but continuing arts moving forward.
Yeah. And, and the committee will continue on to keep monitoring their plan as well as making adjustments as needed. And so their continued input will be valuable as we move forward.
Any questions or comments? Mia, anything? Okay. All right. Next up athletics presentation.
Okay, so I, I know we briefly touched on this at the, I believe the last study session. But I do want to take this opportunity to kind of elaborate a little bit more on our athletics program. I do want to share what Peddle City Schools has been contributing to athletics. Our district budget has, has budgeted approximately 530,000 for our grade seven through 12th for, for supporting our athletics.
And actually, Tony, if I could just clarify, this is actually the projected budget for 23, 24. So sorry, I updated the numbers for him because we actually developed the budget. So I just want to clarify that.
Thank you, Chris.
Sorry.
In addition to that, 70,000 for next year will go towards the cost of transportation. And, and we also had purchased recently two nine passenger vans currently in development for, for training and usage once, once we get that ready to go. Just kind of a approximate breakdown of, of where that, where that 530,000 is going. Our athletic directors were providing point eight FTE, point four at each site, which equates to approximately $80,000. Our coach stipends, we spend about $388,000. Again, the transportation, we're, we're increasing $70,000 to, to help support the junior highs and high schools with charter buses as needed. And, and then once we're, once we have everything in place, we'll be able to utilize the nine passenger van as well. In addition to that, we also pay for upgrades and maintenance of large projects. And I believe maybe Chris can elaborate a little bit more on this. But, but we do a lot, a lot of work around upgrading maintenance and furnishing equipment for the school sites.
I just want to provide some context for some of this. So this year we funded two sections of the athletic directors, but one of the section at each high schools came out of sites allocation. What we're building in for the 2023, 24 is that that's not going to come out of the school sites allocation. So that's why this really should say 23, 24. So we're building in two district funded, in addition for each of the two high schools, direct funded athletic director sections. And that's in addition. So they not only get a section, but then they also get a stipend. And then there's a stipend for each of the two comprehensive junior high schools as well. They don't get a section, but they get a stipend. And then the coaches stipends are both classified and certified and that fluctuates from year to year. So these are estimates that we're building the budget on and it fluctuates depending on how many coaches and what, 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 exactly what programs that they offer, how many coaches they hire, et cetera. So this is just based on the budget that we're developing for next year. And then the transportation, we are building in 30,000 for each comprehensive high school and 5,000 for the junior highs to help offset the cost of transportation for their programs. Well, we're in the process of trying to develop how we can better support athletic transportation. We know that it's been a significant challenge. Back in 2018, 19, we actually tried to provide better transportation for athletics. It was a challenge at that time. We worked with athletic directors. We actually met regularly trying to figure it out. We actually had a significant higher number of bus drivers at that time than we do now. The pandemic kind of threw a monkey wrench into how many bus drivers we've been able to recruit. We actually are finding a little bit more availability right now and being able to do that. We've hired two recently. They're in training right now. In fact, we have one of them taking a test on Friday. So we're, we're in the process of doing that. We've had a significant transition in our transportation department and new director will be starting soon. And so that's part of our also exploring this whole idea of trying to actually acquire nine passenger vans. So the board at last board meeting purchased two new electric nine passenger vans. And so that's us dipping our toes into that nine passenger electric van. We're also exploring the idea of maybe getting two diesel vans as well because the problem is with electric vans, then they might have limited how far they can go, et cetera. So we want to have the availability of having both. So we're exploring that as an option too. And part of that will be then developing processes so that can coaches check a van out. Will that be an opportunity? But then that goes to having a process, like how, what, what kind of training should the coach have? You know, they have to then get tested periodically. So there's protocols that will need to go along with it. So we're hoping that our new director of transportation can start developing some of those protocols as we gear up for next fall. So those are some of the things that we're going to be working on over the summer. So that's part of that 70,000 and an effort to try to mitigate some of the impact to our school sites while we're doing some of these other things. And then, yeah, for some of the upgrades for the maintenance, well, we already have done things like paying for the annual maintenance on reconditioning football helmets. For example, we pay for those types of maintenance on equipment. The smaller things, of course, the school sites cover. And then the bigger upgrades, we partner with the schools to do things like at Casa Grande, they just did some major upgrades to the girl softball. So we, we came in and worked with Billy, the softball, the girl softball coach and did some improvements to the girls dugout. We were able to redo the fencing on the dugout. We redid the roof to the dugout. We redid the roof to the boys' baseball dugout, the home dugout. We partnered with them to help them get the outfield fence in. We, we covered a significant portion of that cost. At Peddle High School, we were able to partner with them to redo the girl softball. We actually completely redid the girls' home dugout for the girl softball field. We came in and did an AD accessible ramp and redid all of the landing. We are partnering them with them right now to get the outfield fence for the girls' softball field. We partnered with the boys' baseball to help them do some improvements to their baseball field as well. So we're a lot of that type of bigger stuff where they can do some fundraising, but we come in and help with that. So we, it's a good partnership, I think. So we, we do help with some of those other bigger improvements. And then athletic trainer, we have been paying about 15,000 a year. They, that has been not enough money. So we've increased that to 18,000. That may or may not be enough money. So that's something that we're currently evaluating.
Thank you, Chris. This is kind of just a comparison of other districts in our area and, and how they fund their athletic directors. So as you can see, for example, Santa Rosa, there, they use, they have a lot of concentration funding to support some of that. Novato, for example, they have 2FT, but that's funded out of their parcel tax. So, but this is just a kind of a quick glance at some of our nearby districts and how they're funding their athletic directors. In addition to what the district is funding, the sites also have ways to, to help raise money for their athletic programs. This is just kind of a snapshot of what each of the high schools are doing in regards to their boosters and personal donations that aren't required, but, but it's part of the ask and what they spend with their own site budgets to support their athletic program. And, and some information from both our high schools. And I think one thing that we also want to emphasize is that, you know, even though, you know, we provide funds and school sites are raising money, there are other costs that associated with it. The parents have to sometimes provide for their own child to participate in sports. And we want to recognize that and, and know that, that those are, those are, can be real burdens for some of our families. And, and we'll find ways to, you know, to figure out how we can help mitigate those, those as well. But we also just wanted to acknowledge it, but also to emphasize that, you know, our coaches manages their sports and student needs, but no student is turned away if they cannot provide their own equipment. And I think that's something that school sites are, are, you know, really good, good about making sure that students who want to participate can participate and eliminating as many barriers for them to participate as possible. And with that, any questions?
I also just want to ground us in the, in our board, our board goals, right? So our board goal three is that all student scholars and families will be engaged in their learning community. We talk about events and, and making sure that all student interests, we talk about experiences to allow students We talk about experiences to allow students to explore their interests, intentionally building community to ensure that every student or district can identify a trusted adult at school. So many times, I know myself, as a student athlete in high school, we have about close, right around half of our students that are in our secondary schools, who are student athletes and participate in a sport. And many, many times, the coach is the trusted adult. And so just, you know, I can't emphasize enough how important sporting events and what they do to a culture of a school, so.
I'm sorry, I also want to provide one last piece of information about transportation. Why now? Why are we purchasing vans and why are we adding more people transportation? Part of it is, as you recall, about a month ago, we came and did a presentation on the annual transportation report. The state is now finally providing us with some relief on people transportation costs. So as you recall, we're actually able to get about $200,000 in reimbursement costs toward people transportation costs. So we're investing those funds into providing some of this direct support directly to the people transportation department, so that we're using those funds into purchasing some of these vans and also into trying to invest this directly into the school sites to provide them with some of these dollars to help offset the transportation costs. So I just wanted to let you know that's where some of these funds are coming. We're taking some of this additional money that the state is providing for us and putting that directly toward some of these additional costs.
My biggest concern is the equity issue. Students that can't afford to buy the shoes they need to play, or I don't know if they have to pay for their own uniforms. I mean, it's also, it's the same thing with field trips. It's like, how do we meet those needs? Do parents have to just come begging to the school? Or is there a method that, you know, they can apply for a scholarship, or how does that work?
That might be a good question for the school sites of how they help identify those students. I know that we've, you know, begun kind of looking at not just participation in athletics, but also just any other event like prom and dances. And how do we help identify students who maybe are too afraid to come forward, that they are in a situation where they can't afford those things? Make it comfortable, make it, you know, easy for them to help identify themselves so that we can provide that support? Because no child should have to feel like they can't participate in some kind of school function because of money or issues of not being able to afford it. So I know school sites, they build a relationship with students. Other students may say some things. I know when I was a principal, it was a lot of times looking at students who weren't going and finding and asking them, like, you know, why aren't they going? Is there a reason why? And making that kind of part of the process, like, the goal is 100% of students participate. And if there is reasons why they're not, let's find out why. And finding out who has a relationship with those students and ask them so that we can help let them know that there's support for them. So I think every site might have a different process, and that's something that we want to explore moving forward as well, how we can maybe systematize that.
Mia, did you have something?
I'm not necessarily sure how a lot of schools or specific sports do with the students who can't necessarily afford certain equipment. But I do know that on the PHS softball team, we kind of had a thing where if, like, people had old equipment that was still useful, we would leave it in the bin, like, in case someone forgot their cleats or needed a new pair. Or we had, like, a team catcher's gear and things like that. So that could definitely be something like the, it's like thrifting, it's good for the environment, too.
Did you have any other questions or comments about the presentation? Julian, did you have anything?
I have a couple of questions. So how will teams be able to request the charter buses for transportation? Will it be the same as the yellow buses?
I think we need to work that out this summer. I mean, we haven't even received the buses yet. I mean, the vans, we're just in the process of ordering them.
I was asking about the charter, because I think one of them said to provide for the charter buses.
Oh, that'll go through the same process that is in place right now. Literally, what we're doing is we're putting money into the school sites' budgets, so they have access to the money. So instead of them having to fundraise as much money, they now have access to funds to use toward the same process that they have already used. So they already have a process in place where they can access charter buses. It's just a matter of now they have funds to pay for that instead of having to fundraise to do that.
So then will, like, the spring sports get the short end of the sticks? It's there later in the school year? Like, if they run out of money? Like, if, you know, the fall and the winter sports, if there's only a set amount of money for each site for athletics?
I would assume that the principals will be working with their athletic directors to find an equitable way to distribute that.
And then how, what's the determination on what equipment to maintain and to upgrade? You know?
Some equipment are just required to be upgraded. I know, like, I want to say that helmets, I think, are required annually to be upgraded. But it may determine on athletic directors and the coaches to determine whether or not equipment needs replacement based on their observation of it.
And then do the sites, I guess we kind of answered this, do the sites, the schools get to determine how much of their site funds get spent on athletics? Because it looked like there were two different numbers up there for Casa and for Pedaluma. Or maybe that was for the booster?
That was the booster, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Because, I mean, that was a sticking point in the equity special board meeting, was the different, you know, different sites raising different amounts of money, which can, you know, like Mia was saying, have an impact on who's participating, who's not. Has that been, have we talked about how to address that as well?
From the last time we had a shared the kind of costs, that's a conversation, I think, as, I know we have, like, a new principal at Casa for next year and for Palomino Junior High as well. So the conversations, as we begin to plan for next year at our admin retreat, conversations we'll bring up about, you know, how do we help support in some of those areas? But I know there's, you know, district-level conversations about possibly finding different ways to support that as well. I don't know if there's an easy solution, because when it comes down to money, it's whether or not we can find people willing to donate, willing to partner with us, people willing to help support, you know, these kinds of programs that allows our students to really have a well-rounded education and well-rounded experience at PCS. But I'm hoping, as we continue next year, that we'll be able to at least help offset some of these costs that they're currently doing. And maybe help alleviate some of the booster requirements or boosters that they're doing and support some of that and try to make it more equitable, especially at Casa Grande, where there's a lot more students than maybe at Palomino High School, and making sure those students have that opportunity as well.
What are these personal donations going to do? Just because I do have two students who play sports, and, you know, I'm like, okay, here's the money. But like, what is it going towards? Like, what's the transparency on what that money's being spent on? Because we've been told different things. I'm just wondering if there's a way to know that, for that to be known to parents.
I'm not sure. I mean, I think maybe some of our administrators may have a little bit more knowledge on that. Or maybe Mia, I don't know, that's something that you've been asked to do when you play softball? If you had to donate, or if you donated, where that money typically goes?
Yeah, so again, for softball, so we did, like, you hit, like, base runs, and then, like, people would give you money for it. And our coach told us that it was all going to jerseys and things like that. Not necessarily sure if that was true. But on the other hand, for my basketball team, we had to donate a lot, like, had to. And honestly, I don't really know where it went, so.
So what we did when I first came here, and David Fashera was first here back in 2016-17, we implemented RevTrack. And the whole idea around RevTrack and the widgets that were developed is that parents would donate a certain amount of money, and they could click on the widget, girl softball, boys' baseball, soccer, football, whatever it was. And that money goes into account, and we put it into the school site's athletic account, whatever it's for. And we set all of this accounting up, and the school sites have direct access to it. And we can actually run reports and tell exactly how the money is spent. And then that worked really well for a period of time. And then the athletic directors and the principals and the school account clerks all have access to those funds. And then there was a period of time where some school sites did or did not maintain that or did not use it, and then it went through boosters. Parents were encouraged to give it directly to boosters, which operate outside of the school district. So we were not able to really do that or not do that. So I think it comes down to how the school decides to track the $150 or whatever level of donation parents want. When it flows through RevTrack, we have a way that everything is accounted for, and there is a level of transparency, because we can run reports and we can see exactly where the money goes and exactly what it's spent on. If it goes through a coach or if it goes through the boosters, then the district doesn't have any kind of control or ability to run reports or to have any level of accounting around how the money is or is not accounted for. The boosters may, and, you know, they can probably have some of transparency. So, I mean, I think that's part of the challenges, that there was a level of inconsistency on how it was handled for a period of time.
I just wanted to say, this conversation is really rubbing me the wrong way, because, you know, when you're telling our students and families you have to donate, and it's not a donation, is it? It's a pay-to-play, and we need to find a way to get out of the pay-to-play kind of, and not just for athletics, but for, you know, all of our extracurriculars. You know, I don't know what the answer is, but this isn't it. It's not, "Your kid does this, so you need to cough up this." It can't be that. It has to be something else, because that would be a barrier. Children will self-select themselves out of that option, because they don't want to put that burden on their parents. You can't do that.
On that note of solutions, is it, like, legal for us to advertise for businesses on our vans and buses while they're going to a vet? Like, if Friedman sponsors the softball team, can we have a magnet that says, like, Friedman supports our softball team? And then that coach owns that magnet and puts it on the bus only when it's, like, I don't know if legally as a public entity, what we can?
The board should have board policy around those types of advertisements. And the board policy defines who can advertise on, you know?
Yeah, like, I love Loganitas, but we probably shouldn't put that on a bus full of children, like, yeah.
Yes, yes, that's the type of thing that a board policy would want to define. So anyway, yes, you know, we could certainly bring back board policy around setting parameters around it. It's the same thing on our facilities. I mean, you'll notice there's facilities where there's banners and other things, where school sites take donations from organizations, and they put up, they put up a sign. But the key is being consistent and not discriminatory also around, you give $200 and you put up a sign for six months, you give 500 and you get one month. And what is the size of the sign? I mean, there, and so it would be important to have a policy so that there is some level of consistency, so.
Yeah, I mean, like Sheldon's saying, if my kids in the basketball team, and there's 10 kids on the team, times 150 versus, I don't know the sound, I don't know how many people on a softball team, sorry Mia. But, you know, there's just more, so that's more money for them. But then the school's also kicking in money. So I'm just wondering, like, who's keeping track of all of these funds? Because we have the district funds, site funds, parent donations, booster funds. So I don't even know if we have a clear number on how much is really being spent every year on athletics. Because I never given through RevTrack. I don't even know what RevTrack is.
So many students in lots of different sports.
And I think, Joan, I think your point is really well taken. It is a hard nut to crack, because it really is, if you ask me, what is the true cost of athletics, running athletics? I could not tell you that, because I really don't know. Because there is a lot of moving parts to it, and you ask what kind of equipment needs to be maintained? I know football helmets need to be reconditioned annually. That is, I don't know all of the ins and outs of what needs to be maintained from an athletic equipment perspective. But it could be something where, we talked about foundations. It could be that you are going out and looking for donations to come in from a district perspective and try to support something like an athletic program where you could run all of the athletic type of expenditures, other than what the district contributes, through something like that.
Which would allow us for more accountability, because we would be able to control those funds somewhat.
And you could look at advertising and that type of thing to help support that type of effort where you could consolidate it and really kind of organize it. And there's a lot of businesses in town that probably would get behind, I mean, my daughter was in Coach Pitch and all of that stuff, and all of those organizations. I mean, you go to a lot of the little restaurants and stuff in town, and they all have pictures with, you know, and t-shirts and all of that stuff supporting a lot of the, you know, the small teams in town. So that's something a lot of small businesses get behind.
Questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Next up is the May revise and budget update for 2023 to 24.
I'm sorry that I have neither a video nor music. I do have some pictures, because some of the numbers are quite small. I don't have enough for everyone, but I do have, for those of you who have older eyes like mine. Luckily, it's only about 50 slides. See, that'll clear the room. Okay, I'm going to walk you through the May revise. I'll try not to bore too many people in the audience, and it won't hurt my feelings if you guys want to leave. Okay, I'll go quickly. Okay, so I just want to give some highlights to the May revise the governor came out with for the 2023-24 budget. This is not as rosy as it's been over the past few years. And so it's not as bad as it was three years ago when the pandemic first hit, and we had to shelter in place, and they were looking at 10% reductions. So, you know, if we want to put it in those type of perspectives. But there is a $31.5 billion state deficit, and that is an increase of about $9.5 billion since the January 2023 governor's budget proposal. So that is not going in the right direction. Of note, there continue to be concerns on the horizon. So the federal debt ceiling impasse is continuing. One had hoped when I did this slide a few days ago, that maybe that had been resolved by now. It has not been resolved, at least as of when I watched the news this morning. I did not watch it during the day today, I will admit. There's the delayed tax filing, and so we don't really know what the state's taxes are going to be yet. But I don't think that that's going to bode well for us. I don't think that the people that, I just don't think that that's going to actually increase the taxes for us when those come in. And then we have interest rate increases. And so those interest rate increases mean that people are not doing things like, "Let's renovate your house, let's build new houses." Let's do that type of thing that's actually going to generate more revenue for the state. And we know that there have been bank failures. We know that there have been indications, not that we're in a recession necessarily, but there have been indications that there is a possible recession on the horizon. And the first one, two, or three bullets also are indications of the fourth bullet. Because if the federal debt ceiling impasse does not get resolved, that will most certainly lead to a recession. Prop 98, I am not going to bore you, nor do I feel like I'm qualified to really go into all the nuances of Prop 98, and what's test one versus what's test two versus what's test three. But I can tell you that we are still in test one. We were in test one for this 2022-23 year, and we are anticipating being in test one for next year. It shows a decrease of $2 billion. It shows a decrease of two billion dollars. And that's a three point eight billion dollar decrease over the past three years. So three years from now, or two years ago versus next year, three point eight billion dollar decrease over three years. What does that mean for us if we're in test one? It means that that ten percent reserve cap remains in effect for next year. It's not going to be a problem for us because of all of the raises that we've given. So I don't, I don't anticipate that that will be a problem. Some of the highlights continuing on, on the, on the more positive side of the ledger. We do have a strong cost of, cost of living adjustment or COLA. And that has actually increased from eight point one three to eight point two two percent. Why did that go up? And that's a statutory COLA. And then what that means statutory COLA is that means in the law, there's a formula that defines what is the COLA and that is based on tax revenues through April. And that COLA has gone up to eight point two two percent. And in the May revise, that's a funded COLA. There was a lot of conversation over the last couple of months because of that reduction in state revenues, that, that COLA might not be funded, that they might deficit the COLA. Oh, we'll give you ninety cents on the dollar. But that actually is a fully funded COLA. And that's an additional four, four billion dollars in order to fund that. And they're applying that to not only the LCFF, but also to categorical programs like our mandated cost block grant, the ELOP programs, food service, that universal meal program, et cetera. Unfortunately, how is he dealing with the deficit then? If he is funding the COLA, well, he's doing what Tony indicated in his presentation for the art, music, instructional materials discretionary block grant, which is to reduce that further, to, to reduce it further from a thirty percent reduction to a fifty percent reduction. And so instead of that four point four million dollars we were slated to receive, we're only going to get about two point two million. And by the way, they've given us two point two million in cash to date, which means they're not going to give us any more cash. So I have a feeling they had kind of been anticipating that all along. But that's just my spidey sense. You can tell I have a five-year-old grandson, right? And then they're further looking at reducing our learning recovery emergency block grant and they're looking at reducing that by thirty percent. So that, excuse me. That was a six point six billion dollar block grant that we had intended to spend over six years, including this year. And so that's also a loss of about two point two million dollars. And so they're reducing that by about thirty-two percent or about a, a loss of about two point two million. And so although that is significant, that's a four point four million dollar loss right off the bat. The good news is that that's a one-time loss versus funding an ongoing COLA. Let's see, there also was this whole equity multiplier, which was intended to be an LCFF add-on. And that's intended to accelerate learning gains. And closing opportunity gaps. We weren't intended to get that anyway, we wouldn't be eligible. And then there's universal transitional kinder, which is fully funded for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. Full implementation. For all students for term five by April second, by board policy, ours is May second. It maintains a twelve to one ratio of adult to student. There was some talk about reducing that to ten to one in the law, but only if it was funded. And there's no funding behind the ten to one. The ELOP or the Extended Learning Opportunities Program is funded for next year and that is ongoing. It's an ongoing program. But they did provide us with one-year flexibility on spending prior year. So if you'll recall, we're getting about one point seven million dollars for that in the first year, which was twenty-one, twenty-two. It was about a six hundred thousand dollar program for last year. We had until June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three to spend that prior year money, that six hundred thousand from last year. And we did not start the program till this year because we got it very late in the year. They're extending that carryover by one year, which is super important for us because that carryover is allowing us to do some creative things this summer for summer school. So for, for example, we're doing a nine-year summer school program and we're also hiring through our partners. Our CBOs are not our chief business officials, but our community-based organization partners. And then we're also doing some push-in or some pull-out with certificate teaching staff. So we're doing this very unique program this year, which is great. And we may actually be able to do that next summer too, being able to tap into this prior year carryover for an additional year. And then there's also ongoing funding for the universal school meals program funded by the state. So that is also being funded for an additional year. It's ongoing funding, but again, it's all based on state funding availability. So it's really funded on a year-to-year, even though it's intended to be an ongoing program. And those are getting, those are getting the COLA, although the Extended Learning Opportunity Program is also based on student eligibility. So we're trying to pin down exactly how many students are eligible to see what our actual funding is going to be. Here are some of the planning factors that we're looking at. So again, when we, when we're doing a budget, we're looking at the twenty-three, twenty-four. But for the multi-year projections, then we'll be using twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six. I actually can't even believe I'm saying twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six. You can see that the employer rate for Cal-Purs is staying at that steady nineteen point one. So remember, for several years, we were having to plan for those significant increases and now those have flattened out. But look at Cal-Purs. And for those of you in the audience who may or may not know, historically, that was eight point two five. So for forty years, STIRS was eight point two five. And now we're paying nineteen point one. Between the STIRS and, and PERS rates, we're now paying close to five million dollars annually more than we were back in the early twenty, twentieth, twenty-first century. And that had to come out of somewhere and it's come out of what we're able to fund every day. The Cal-Purs rate used to be historically thirteen point oh two percent. And now you can see next year is going to be twenty-five point six eight. So that's up one point three percent or a whole, over a percent. And then you can see that's continuing to go up. Remember, the STIRS rate was set by, by the state legislature about eight, nine years ago. The Cal-Purs Board sets the PERS rates each year. And then you can see the California Lottery, what that's estimated to be. LCFF funding factors, remember, even though it's a percent COLA, we actually get a flat increase to the base. One of the things that Tony had talked about when he showed the slide on what Santa Rosa could afford or what they do for the athletic director, it's important to remember they get concentration grant funding. We do not. So when you look at LCFF, you can see the base, right? So that twenty-three, twenty-four base for the TK to three, three add-on, we're getting, we're getting, let's see, twenty-three, twenty-four, ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, right? And then if we're getting supplemental for those unduplicated, we're getting an additional two thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. Santa Rosa, on top of the twenty-one, ninety, they get seven thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars per unduplicated student. So for every student that they have, who's a, who's an unduplicate, an EL or a free and reduced meal student or foster youth, they're getting seven thousand dollars more than we're getting per, per student. So when we wonder why they can afford more, this is why. This just kind of compares the governor's budget back in January with the May revision. And you can see how the LCFF, LCFF funding, even though that COLA has gone up a bit, the actual funding that he's put in the state budget has gone down. Why is that? If the COLA went up, why did the funding go down? It's because he's projecting declines in enrollment and in ADA. So the statewide ADA is definitely declining, both in enrollment and in attendance. That's not just a unique issue for us. And then you can see the reduction in the art, music block grant. And then you can see the reduction in that learning recovery. He was projecting no reduction and now he's projecting at the statewide level, two point five billion. And then these are just some visuals talking about the art, music, instructional materials discretionary block grant, some of what Tony already kind of went over, which is the allocation, distribution. And you can see how they distributed fifty percent. Like I said, we've received fifty percent and then we won't be receiving anymore. And then just how the spending deadline is by two thousand twenty-six. We have three years to spend it, basically. And then the plan must be discussed and then approved, which is on the agenda for tonight. And then essentially, we have three years to spend it. And then the learning recovery block grant. We have five more years to spend. And then this just gives an overview of the major spending proposals, probably not as interesting. It just shows you governor's budget in January versus the May revise. And then these are, I know these are really hard to see, but if you look in two thousand nine, ten, we had seven thousand six hundred and thirty-four students. Two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, that bottom number, we have seven thousand ninety-four. So we're literally down four hundred and twenty-seven students. For those of you who can't read the numbers, I'm sorry, they're so small. This is a lot of loss of ADA and money. These are a little bigger. This is what we're projecting for next year. Elementary, junior high, high school transition program. And then the total, these actually include special day class, South County. I pulled the transition program because that's eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds. And then the total is actually up. So seven thousand ninety-four was as C-beds. I'm projecting, you know, about fifty kids more, a little over fifty kids more. That's good. It's going the right direction, not a lot, but a little. So we'll take it. Just a few other major assumptions. We're staffing TK twenty-four to one with a six-hour instructional assistant because we have to maintain those twelve to one adult-to-student ratio, twenty-four to one K-three, twenty-eight to one, thirty-two to one, thirty-two to one. We met with our South County Director. We're doing all of our enrollment. We look at our enrollment and we do staffing based on enrollment caseloads, special at the same thing. We are adding staffing. We're looking at adding psychs. We're looking at adding a class at Grant for four through six because of our numbers. So we've been doing all of that and we're going to be basing our budgets based on that. Some other major assumptions that will be impacting our budget. We don't have our final property and liability rates, but we are projecting at least a fifteen percent increase at about a hundred and seventy thousand. That could be offset that we had some appraisals done recently. And so we're hoping that'll offset a little bit. Utility increases at least a five percent. The good news is we had some really big solar increases for Casa and Petaluma Junior High because our solar systems were down this year for about five months because we had the battery projects in, in process. The solar couldn't talk to the systems because the batteries were under construction. Workers' comp rates are down, this is good news. It's less than one, our workers' comp is going down by about point two, point three. And then no change in STIRS, we talked about that. PERS rate, we talked about that. SUI rates are also down, that's good news. Site budgets, we actually are increasing all of our site budgets. I got a little happy claps from some of the principals. Thank you. When we were looking at their budgets this year, we knew that the, the impacts of inflation, we're really hitting the sites hard, so we increase our allocations next year by ten percent. Also, just the impacts of reduced enrollment. So, you know, we actually do pay attention to stuff like that and I want to make sure that they're able to operate their schools. And then athletics, I think we've talked about that enough. So we, these are some of the things that we've been looking at. And that's it. There's a lot more to this budget, but I just wanted to kind of give you guys some of the highlights while we're here on transportation. You know, this is probably about a hundred and twenty million dollar budget that we're working on. This just kind of gives you some of the highlights. We've got another two and a half weeks to go before we pull it all together and then take a look at what the bottom line looks like. It's always up and down and up and down, so I never like to guess what it's going to look like. We're working on LCFF calculations and projecting that ADA. So. We shall see. So at the next board meeting, we'll have that preliminary budget for you and then, and then we'll, then we'll be starting to work on the state reports. Any questions? Sorry, it's not as fun as Tony's presentations. Thank you. Questions or comments on that? All right, thank you, Chris. All right, now it is time for comments from the public on non-agendized items. So we're going to open the chat. If you are in person, we asked that you fill out a comment card. If you're online, if you can put your first and last name in the chat and what you would like to speak about. We'll leave the chat open while I read the public comment policy. Under Government Code, Section five four nine, five four point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While Government Code allows speakers to criticize a district's policies, procedures, programs, services and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute-per-person limit or a twenty-minute learn, limit per subject matter. All right. Who do we have in person?
Six in person. Six in person and at least one online on athletics. A Dean, can you put what subject you would like to talk about in there? So we know how to do our math on time. Okay, athletics. So then everyone gets two minutes and thirty seconds.
Let's raise that to three.
I move to extend the time to twenty-five minutes because that works.
Okay, there you go. Thank you, Kayla. All right, all right. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, Scott Landry.
I won't take too much time. I came to talk mainly about transportation to away games. I'm glad that got some play tonight. I'm the father of two sports-playing boys, one who just finished Petaluma High School last year and one who's in the thick of it and plays sports year-round. So again, transportation I not only see as a kind of a safety issue. A lot of times these kids are jumping in with their friends to get to a game that's been rescheduled because of a rained, a rained-out game or something like that. And it's also creating inequities, for sure. We, the, the parents who can leave work at one PM to get to Napa on a Friday afternoon, that's, that's one thing. But most cannot. And, you know, that may lead to, in fact, I think it does lead to some kids not playing, as does the, the fundraising expectations, which one fifty is low. You know, the last, the last fundraiser for baseball, for instance, was set at five hundred dollar expectation, so. And you just go to the well so many times, the well-being, your, your family, your, your friends. And for a kid who plays three sports year-round, it's, it's taxing. So time to get creative with budgets. I know there's all sorts to pay for and not a lot coming in, but a huge proponent in sports and all things extracurricular, sports-sponsored extracurricular activities. So let's make it happen. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Up next, Jacqueline. Her handwriting's so fancy, I was like.
I am Jacqueline Gracie. I help with baseball and football at PHS. I have, I had four kids, one currently still playing sports, three that have gone all through the Petaluma school system and. Three that have gone all through the Petaluma school system and I have always helped out in sports. In fact, I can, I know some of you had some questions that I can answer or help answer as far as fundraising goes. I do the sponsorship packages, send them out to the community, you know, walk around, ask for, for sponsors. So, and on behalf of our sport, sports program, student athletes, coaches and parents, I would like to voice the concern of irregular inequities and funding sports programs in the schools. I also want to thank you for contributions you've made for baseball. And I do baseball, I help with baseball and football. So I'm just going to concentrate on speaking on the sports that I know of, although I do think that all sports and student athletes are important. And the amount of fundraising, Scott said, the 150, the amount of fundraising that has to be done for each sport is overwhelming. A lot of these, you know, they fall on the coaches and the student athletes and the families to come up with it. And I wanted to ask, I know that you had said that there's contributions and we certainly appreciate all the contributions, but I know that, and we spoke, you spoke of the RevTrack. I know that we've had the contributions and everything that we fundraise for, everything that we get from our sponsors goes to pay for pretty much everything. Even the necessities, you know, officiating. As far as baseball goes, hats, baseballs, things that you need to actually play the sport. So, and I can understand the fundraising for if we, you know, want new uniforms or if the kids want to do that or, or fundraising for, you know, dinners or things like that, but to have to come up with that much officiating is very expensive. And I can imagine that it probably is. You know, I can't help but wonder if some of the student athletes may decide not to play because of, of the responsibilities that come with fundraising. Of course, we don't, you know, make people pay. You can't, you know, make people pay. But we are constantly, you know, sending out emails saying, hey, we're this short and we're very transparent. And I can tell you that baseball, we have a parent meeting at the beginning of the season in which our boosters, you know.
You have about 10 seconds.
They come out and, and go through. I know I wanted to leave it for people who are smarter than me, but, um, you know, I think it's just really important for the student athletes. You know, they should be supported and because they are important and all the students and the award winners, you know, they talked about sports and we have an up and coming baseball player and it's really important for them to feel supported, I think. So.
Thank you. And if you have, if anyone has anything left to say, you can always email us as well. So. Okay, next up, Michael Williams.
Hi, I was so impressed with the information that Tony presented that I almost opted not to speak, but I do want to put my two cents in. I'm Michael Williams. I saw Noah when he was a rising sophomore. He's a baseball player. And I've served on the Little League Board. I've personally donated a lot throughout the years, time and money. Until it hurts, I wrote. To help the organization, help out families and literally driven literally thousands of miles, including other players and their parents can't do that. And I've been happy to do that. That was then. High school is a different issue and there's other issues. One that comes to mind is the science on pure passengers in a vehicle and like to influence driver safety. So I was really very impressed to see the attention to detail and the transportation. And given the number of players driving to away games multiplied by the number of trips, investing in professional driving seems really reasonable and wise. So thank you on that. Just on a quick personal note, I had several very close friends die in transportation accidents in high school and that impacted my friends and informed my career later on. And so never on a bus trip to an away game though. So I really appreciate the focus on safety. And so the other part of this is just something that's really important to me and that's the inequity in sports and players losing out. And frankly, the school district losing out on their talent if they're not able to play, if they opt out, they drop out because they just really can't afford to do it. So I think that's really important. And you know, my dad was on the school board when I was in high school and I learned a lot about budget issues as a high school student and talked to the superintendent a lot. And and I really understand that there's a lot of nuances here, but I appreciate you giving us a chance to present ourselves and talk about these issues and give you sort of the, the view from the parent perspective. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, John Dole.
Hi, thank you for the time to be here. I'm John Dole. I'm a parent of three. I've got one going into the high school. I've got two at the high school right now. They're all athletes in various sports. I've been a parent, kind of watching the teams need funds as they, you know, every season after season. And last year I stepped up to become the booster's treasurer. Cause I wanted to get an understanding of what are the schools doing, what's the district doing and why are parents asked to do so much every day financially and transportation wise. And I'll speak honestly, I was pretty shocked. Petaluma High School's annual budget and I have a detailed accounting of everything. If anyone, if I have the opportunity to talk with you separately, I'll do that. It costs $200,000 above and beyond everything that district puts in to run the high school program athletics. And so, and where does that $200,000 come from? It comes 75% of it comes from the parents. So when we talk about that 150 from RevTrack, that's just the tip of the iceberg. There is a range of 150 to 750 to $1,000 that comes from parents. As Scott was saying earlier, he's got a kid doing three sports. You can imagine how hefty that number is for his family and his friends. You know, when, when you take some maybe less fortunate children, financially speaking, they can't afford that. Their families can't afford that. So it's either their decision or their family's decision. Just say, we don't, we, we just can't compete in that, in that world. It becomes a pay to play, which is unfortunate for so many. Transportation wise, the safety issues, people can't get out of work to take their kids. So they're putting their kids either with other parents hopefully, or with other students that just got their license this year or, you know, a year before. That's a disaster waiting to happen. There, there's so much need for financial support for the athletics program to ease the burden, not only on, on the families that are constantly giving, but also to allow the parent, the parents that feel as they, they can't afford to send their child to the, these athletic programs. It'll give them the opportunity. I mean, I think everybody here can acknowledge the, the value that the athletics pay, the, the, the importance that it plays in the development of our children. From self-confidence to leadership to, you know, overcoming adversity. I just, I just, you know, and, and again, we know budgets are tight. We know we're asking, where's the money? Where could it go? But we can come up with a solution together and it just can't be, you know, one side raising the money and the other side doesn't know really how much is needed. So we're here to start the conversation and hopefully we can, we can further this just from the public comments to really make this an agenda item in the future. That's it. Thank you.
Next up, we have Diana Johnson.
Hi, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak as a community member, as a PCS product myself. Two sisters, my children, I have a senior at Petaluma High right now, and I've got an incoming freshman for next year who's at PAX. I'm also a substitute teacher for your district because I'm retired CHP after 25 years. So I could speak to you ad nauseam about these transportation nightmares that we're getting ourselves into. I, that's not my agenda. The thing that I really want to bring attention to and hope can make an agenda item in the future is the athletic director position. I don't know if you guys have ever read your job description for the athletic director, but there's 30 things listed on there that you expect an athletic director to do. That athletic director, according to the district posting that you just had, is being paid to work eight hours a week. It's a point two position. There's absolutely no way that an athletic director can effectively do that job with that expectation of time. It can't be done. I was a two-sport athlete, varsity athlete for four years volleyball and basketball when I was at Petaluma High School. And we had fantastic athletic directors, but times have changed. We had an athletic director who was on scene, who worked at the school. So they were always available. He gave a lot of extra time to doing that job that he didn't get paid for. And now we don't have people that you're able to hire to do that. And I understand that. But we have to do something to expand that from a point two position to a full-time position because we have currently 22 athletic teams at Petaluma High School, 22. And that does not include esports, which I found out today was a thing at Petaluma High School. I did not know that. And then next year we're adding girls' flag football and water polo. That's going to be now 25 athletic teams that you're expecting one person on eight hours a week to manage. It's impossible. It's absolutely impossible. And the problem with that is it then falls down to all the coaches to pick up the slack on all the things that the athletic directors can't do. And again, same problem. We don't have coaches that are on campus anymore. The majority of our coaches at Petaluma High School are not teachers anymore. They're coming from off campus. So you're expecting those people from off campus to have resources to work on fundraising, to work on transportation, to work on scheduling, all these things that should be done by an athletic director so that coaches can coach. And you can get high quality coaches, but a lot of coaches get out of the program because they want to coach. They don't want to administrate a program. And that's what your athletic directors are supposed to do. And I don't, I don't knock any of our athletic directors. They all have done a great job. Kevin Jackson's done a great job. Ray did a great job before him. Everyone that I know of has done a great job, but it's impossible job to do with the amount of time that you give them. So, thank you.
All right. Up next, Monica.
My name is Monica Roney and I have now an incoming sophomore. New to this freshman loveliness of extracurricular sports, we were in cross country and yes, transportation was a huge issue. Transportation needs to happen for cross country. You've got to get there. And he was driving with a 16 year old. Nobody could take him. It's a problem. You, you can't have kids driving kids. You can't expect a team to travel separately. That doesn't, that doesn't promote camaraderie. It doesn't promote pride. You, you've got to, you've got to help those kids get there. They're not, again, able as a 15 year old to get there on their own. And for us that work as an educator, you know, I can't leave my classroom to go drive my kid. So please take into consideration, transportation is really huge and it's an important part to getting kids. And it's about equity. Right? It's about getting kids the chance to get there and not have to worry about it. And I, I want to follow up on this fact that it really does really promotes Petaluma when you're out there and you see the bus. We see buses that come to Petaluma. We're like, oh, they got a bus. We never get a bus. And it happens. Parents, we see it. And I just want you to know, we all know a bus costs $1,000. That's going to, that's going to allow for 70 trips. We have 24 teams, you just said? 22 teams. Each bus you hire is $1,000. Driver and transportation. If you've ever hired one as a teacher to go on a field trip, it's $1,000. So that's 70 trips. Football has at least, I mean, just do the numbers. You've only paid for, it's gone in spring. There's no more money. So it's really a huge factor and we've just, we've depleted that, we depleted those funds over the last 20 years. I understand that. You know, each school used to have their own bus. So we've either got to talk about being safety, we either got to talk about pride and how are we going to, how are we going to show up with the bus so that we look like we're ready to play? How are we going to, how are we going to promote that? So the kids, when they're, they feel like they're supported, they, they're ready to be there. There is a team traveling. It's so much nicer to travel as a team, not individually. So my focus is going to be transportation, but all of those, all of those issues really, really help promote an athletics program that Petaluma has always been a huge proponent of. And it's a huge part of who we are as Petaluma and in our schools. And high school is a huge part of keeping kids involved in school and out of trouble. Sports does that for them. So really promote it. Find a way to pay athletic directors. Find a way to pay coaches. I mean, baseball has nine coaches and only one, one gets paid. And they're there every day till six o'clock, every day for three months.
About 10 seconds left.
And so I, those numbers are just not real, right? Like there's real people doing real things and we can volunteer and volunteer and pay and pay and pay. But really, let's really just honor our athletics program.
Thank you. And on Zoom, we have a couple of comments. Phoebe Ellis.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yes? Oh, so sorry. Hi, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me to join. And I do appreciate this evening's presentations regarding the budget and then Tony's presentation about athletics. That is sort of one of the first times I have heard that much detail about an athletics budget coming out of Petaluma City Schools. So very much appreciated. And then all of the speakers' comments are all very meaningful and thoughtful and real, as Monica just talked about. I've been involved with sports for many years. I have my last child is graduating here in a couple of weeks. And I can speak as a parent. I was on the school board for many years. I've been a member of the Petaluma High School boost, athletic boosters. It is a frustrating, confusing process. And it was very clear tonight during the presentation that there's not a clear process lined out by Petaluma City Schools. Who does athletics even fall under? Is it under student services? Tony was giving the, the presentation tonight, not my. What does it look like? There needs to be a consistent process. How do you enroll in sports? A lot of districts have a district wide athletic director. It might be something we want to consider. And then each of the comprehensive high schools or junior highs has a athletic, part-time athletic director on their campus. But there's no consistency. It has never been a priority at Petaluma City Schools for athletics, for funding or for support. As someone mentioned tonight, we have, at the comprehensive high schools, more than half of the students play at least one sport. That's a significant number of students. And their experience is very meaningful for them. So we need to rally around, come together, make this an agendized item, have a study session about it. As it's been mentioned, it promotes exercise, friendships, responsibility, accountability, leadership, learning a new school. It opened doors for many student athletes who would not go on to play, go on to, you know, postgraduate, either at a junior college or a four-year school. The amount of athletes that are going on to the next level is incredible that we should be promoting that and highlighting that. So too much falls to parents and coaches, as I think Diana, someone pointed out. Like these coaches want to coach. That's what they're doing. And they have to raise money and they have to coordinate buses. So I, I think there's so much goodness to be had from sports. So I'm hoping this can be a starting point and partnership because parents want to help. They want a great experience. So we're all willing and ready. And I know, you know, we can get plenty of parents from Costa to get involved and help out. So I think this is a great start to a very meaningful discussion. So I'm hoping that the board and administration can kind of take this on and really make it happen for our student athletes. So thank you very much. And it's been a great school year and cheers to all the graduates and thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Phoebe. All right. Um, next up, a dean. Am I reading that right? Probably put my glasses on. Okay.
Hi, I hope you guys can hear me. And first I want to say thank you to the school board for your volunteering all of these hours of, out of your life to be a part of this process. And I have a few things to say about the sports issue. I'm a mom of three kids in Petaluma City Schools and I have been very happy with them and I, I, they've enjoyed their experiences and it's been really great. But I feel that the sports transportation is one of my biggest pet peeves and what I have to deal with. You all throw around the word equity every day and it has to be equitable. It has to be this, it has to be that. And I really hope as board members, you're brave enough and strong enough to really look at what equity means. If you're a low income family in a Petaluma City School and you want your kid to play a sport. If you're a low-income family in a Petaluma City School and you want your kid to play a sport, you have to think about getting your kid to that sports, wherever they're going, whether it be, I have three kids who do baseball, golf, and track in the junior high. You have to think about getting your kids to those activities. So for one sports season, you're talking about forty hours that you have to take away from your job. So that's forty hours of vacation time that you have to take off your job to take a kid to that activity. Any of you sitting in this room now, think about forty hours of your vacation time and what that would mean. But parents are doing, over three months, parents are doing that every sports season. For some parents, they have an opportunity that they can take that time off, or they've built up their vacation, their time. For some parents, it means I lose my job, or I take my kid to a sports event. Or I trust my kid to sit in a car with a sixteen-year-old I don't know, or a coach in the high school that I don't know. And trust it, they will be taken safely to Napa, going on those little windy roads, to all of those different places that our kids are expected to go. Transportation is essential if we want kids to be able to participate in sports. And if we want our low-to-middle-income families be able to say, yes, you can be a part of your sports team. We see daily parents who can afford to have their kids do summer meets, do all of these different activities for the kids to make them excel in their sports. Every kid in a Petaluma City School should have the opportunity to participate. And transportation should not be the thing that stops them from being a part of a school team. And for many of those kids who are low-income, middle-income, being a part of a school team has their morale higher, boosts their, their confidence, makes them feel they're a part of a school spirit. So I'm asking you, as you consider the budget and you look at everything you're looking at, to really think about equity in terms of young kids being able to participate in a school activity. And for the parents out there who honestly have to, like, struggle to be able to take time off work to do this, it really is essential that as a school, as a, a school board, you guys really think about that and put that into your heads and really focus on what is best for all kids, not just the kids who can afford to do it, for all kids in your school district. Again, thank you for volunteering your time. I really appreciate what you do. And to our school district, I appreciate what you do, but this, it's time to really take a good, hard look at what we're expecting from parents and how we are discriminating against our low-income, middle-income families in the school district. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up.
Real quick, I'll move to extend the public comment period time by five minutes, so we can take the next.
Okay. All in favor?
I.
I. All right, thank you, Caitlin. Next up, Cassandra or Cassandra? Not sure what the pronunciation is.
Hi, this is Cassandra Nickel. It's Cassandra, not Cassandra, and thank you for your time. And first of all, Adean, I, I hope I'm saying that name correctly. I, I loved exactly what you said. It was beautiful, and thank you for your words. I couldn't have said it better, so I'm not going to say too much more. But just the fact that my kids have grown up with some amazing kids that have exhibited some serious and amazing athletic skills in elementary school and at Westside Relays, Westside Relays. However, because of their financial circumstance, they could not pursue their athleticism beyond elementary school. Instead, they are left cheering and supporting their friends that can actually participate in high school athletics. And that, my Petaluma, my Petalumans, breaks my heart. So I know that you mentioned that all kids are eligible to participate, and that no kid will be turned away. I hope that's true, and I hope you stand by your words.
All right, um, next up is Amy. Oh, were you gonna say something, Matthew? Oh, sorry, I saw you leaning in. Um, next up is Amy.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Yes. Hi, my name's Amy Schwapack. I am a parent of three kids, all Petaluma High, one at University of Washington this year, a senior boy, and a freshman daughter. I'm also the coach of the Petaluma volleyball team, varsity coach. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo a lot of what's been said on a couple of areas. But my first comment is a little bit of surprise, listening to the people that are kind of responsible for the decision-making in our athletics programs about how little is actually known about athletics and how it works. Three years ago, going on my fourth year now, coming into coaching Petaluma High School, it's exactly how I felt, with very little support to educate me otherwise. So I've spent the last three days, we won't talk about Coach Stipens, because I think it's more important to, to focus on the athletic director role and transportation. Let's not even talk about that. But I do believe that just understanding as a coach what, what goes into the job is a really critical point of this. And I think that, I hope this lends to a deeper conversation at another time. I would love to participate in one of those chairs to educate anyone who cares to, to know, and decision-makers in particular, about the sports programs and how we raise money, what responsibilities we hold as coaches, because it's, it's a lot. Trust me, it's a lot, a lot of responsibility, a lot of influence, as you well know. So I hope this starts a conversation. That's my, my goal in speaking tonight, a bigger, deeper conversation and understanding. The three areas I want to cover are just the athletic, athletic director role, and the funding is absolutely ridiculous. There's no question. I think we all agree on that. Let's get creative and figure out how to make it a full-time position. Let's market for candidates. Let's come up with creative ways to find someone who can support us as coaches. Because by doing that alone, you're going to eliminate a lot of the responsibilities that coaches are taking on that are causing burnout and are basically not giving you guys the level of coaching staff that you need, the professionalism that you need at that level with our children. So the athletic director position is an absolute mess. There's no, everything else goes behind that. Transportation, same thing. There are creative ways to do this. In our league, Vine Valley, we place, you know, we play schools like Casa Grande. We don't need a bus for that away game. We don't need buses per se for every single away game. Maybe the start there is figuring out, there, by the way, twelve hundred dollars for a charter, I know, because I did all the research and, and got to this year. But we need to figure out creative ways. If we can't afford a bus for every away game, let's identify that American Canyon and Vintage are very dangerous roads to take to away games, and those should be, those should be the preferred games for transportation. We can make creative decisions. We don't have to give it all. You know, we don't have the money. We can't cover it all. Let's figure out what we can cover. So that's my comment on transportation. I'd love to discuss it more. On the equity point, I just want to make.
We have about fifteen seconds left.
On the equity point, I want to make clear that every coach that I know works their tails off to make sure no kid feels not like they can't participate. We offer, that's why we fundraise, so we can offer money. If they can't afford their practice t-shirts or anything else, we will cover that. But that's on an individual coaching basis, and I think we need to do a better job at making sure if we see transportation, everything else, that will be solved.
Thank you. Is that it? Is there anyone else in person that has a comment? Nope. All right. Moving on to adoption and approval of the agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
All right, report on activities and correspondence of school.
Can we just interrupt real quick? We need to pull an item in.
Oh. That's a consent, though, right?
Thank you. Is it on consent?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Report on activities and correspondence of school board members, open house at McNear, Kennelworth, McDowell, Valley Oaks, and Grant, Petaluma City Schools art show, marimba concert, budget advisory committee, Eastside Relays, and a live Oak site visit. All right. Oh, Mia, I didn't get your activity.
I just, I was looking at it and realized I never pressed send. Sorry about that. Just a lot of stuff with museum, some zoo halls. We actually had the last zoo hall of the school year this, today, so sad. And some in-class tours, really fun. Found out we're getting some new animals. That's really cool. Lots of stuff with church and broadcast. Actually, I attended the, I think it was Monday, the Cool Petaluma Resource Expo. I've actually been working with John Crowley about how to incorporate Cool Petaluma into schools and call it Cool Schools to get kids to live more sustainably and to make campus more environmentally friendly. And preparing for graduating, so.
Julian, I mean, I know you're technically graduated, but did you have anything you wanted to share? Okay, all right. Okay, next up, comments from the public on consent items. If there's anyone in person or online that like, would like to speak about anything on the consent agenda, we'll open the chat for just a bit. Please put your first and last name in the chat and what you would like to speak about. All right, we can close the chat. Is anyone in person that would like to make a comment about something on the consent agenda? No. Okay, moving on.
I move to poll item twelve point two point seven from the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
I. I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Anything?
I'm glad we found or refound Ryland Business Consulting for the, for the near future.
Yes. If I, if I may, I would like to give an, just a clarification on the second reading to Career Exploration Developments. I believe in the course review, it had a language that wasn't meant to be in there, and I want to give an update on that language. It just really emphasizes that this course, there is no prerequisites or requirements for the course.
I just want to note, I think if I'm mistaken on item, let's see what number this is for. This might say the motivated behavior board policy. It was, it wasn't posted. Something else is posted in its, Civil Rights Act of sixty-four, Savior six. I think, I think something was mis, misposted, is all I'm saying. I mean, we.
Things posted, right?
Yeah, there were.
Yeah. Neither thing is the BP that we're voting to approve. I think it's what children say, right?
Yeah.
The, the attachments are not technically the correct attachment.
Yeah, it's not the BP. I mean, it was on the last, it was in first reading last time, but it's not here. I don't, I don't know.
Legally, I think, yes. Sorry. So I move to poll item twelve point four point one from the consent agenda.
All in favor?
I. I move to approve the consent agenda as reamended. Second.
All in favor?
I.
All right. Anything else?
We just.
Oh, we did. Okay, all right. We voted. Okay.
We're good.
Um, all right, thanks. Comments from the public on action items? If there's anyone in person or online that would like to make a comment about one of the action items, the chat will be open for about a minute. You can come up in person. All right, I think we can close the chat. All right, Caitlin's favorite action item, AV thirty-sixty-one.
I move to stay in hybrid for another month.
I second.
All in favor?
I.
All right, approval of resolution twenty-two, twenty-three dash twenty-seven. Declaring June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual, otherwise known as LGBTQIA+, Pride Month.
I move to approve resolution two, 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 three, dash, two, seven.
I second.
Are we gonna read it?
If I read it, I'm gonna cry, so I don't want to read it.
Okay. And I want, and I'll just, I just want to make a quick comment on this as well, because the last couple of board meetings, we've had, you know, resolutions for Jewish Heritage Month and API Month. And, and so now this is a resolution for Pride Month next week. And the comment is, you know, these should be non-events, you know, that celebrate the diversity of our district and our community. But I just want to note that the backdrop of Pride Month this year is particularly stark, and we tried to capture that in this resolution, and we tried to capture a clear signal to our community that LGBTQ families and students and staff in this district are, are full members of our community. They are seen, they're valued, and they contribute to the diversity and the strength of our district, which is our diversity. So it reads, whereas in the United States, June is traditionally designated as Pride Month, time to specifically highlight and celebrate the inclusion of contributions of LGBTQIA+ people in the nation. And June twenty-twenty-three in particular marks the fifty-fourth anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, which highlighted and served as a catalyst for the struggle for LGBTQIA+ rights. Yet, whereas according to the American Civil Liberties Union, there have been over four hundred and seventy anti-LGBTQIA+ bills proposed in US state legislatures, state legislatures in twenty-twenty-three so far, with some already adopted into law. And whereas those bills and laws aim to restrict for LGBTQIA+ people some of the basic freedoms and supports enjoyed by, enjoyed by all Americans, including accurate identification, free speech and expression, healthcare, public accommodations, and curriculum in schooling. And whereas according to leading research by Boston University, these proposals cause real harm to LGBTQIA+ students and their families, even if they are ultimately defeated. And those measured harms include increased anxiety, clinical depression, and self-harm. And whereas sexual orientation and gender expressed bias bullying is among the most common forms of harassment in schools and peer harassment. And whereas harassment and bullying contribute to significantly higher rates of school dropout, academic failure, and school disengagement. And whereas LGBTQIA+ youth are more likely to experience a mental health condition and are at greater risk of suicide and deserve our vocal affirmation and support, as well as special attention to the unique challenges they may face at school and in their communities. And whereas education regarding LGBTQIA+ issues increase understanding, cultivates respect for LGBTQIA+ students, staff, and families, and creates a culture of allyship. And whereas supportive policies that specifically mention sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression are associated with students feeling safer, lower levels of bullying, decreased incidence of harassment related to sexual orientation, increased teacher-staff interventions, and greater reporting of incidents in a safe, accessible, and accountable process under California Education Code. And whereas the California Fair Employment and Housing Act prohibits employment discrimination based upon sexual orientation. And whereas the Fair Act, Fair Education Act of two thousand and twelve called for positive inclusion of the contributions of LGBTQIA+ Americans in social studies curriculum and the. Americans in social studies curriculum and the Student Success and Opportunity Act of 2013 strengthened those strengthened protections for transgender students and affirmed that all students should be recognized and participate in activities by their gender identity. And whereas Pedaluma City Schools' models advocates and promotes the inclusive and respectful treatment of all members of the community it serves and is committed to safe safety for all, including LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas Pedaluma City School strives to be an inclusive school community and will continue to build an environment where every student grows up, knowing their school community, their school community supports them, is proud of them, and has a place for them, exactly as they are. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees recognizes and rejects the shameful history and present-day manifestation of bias against against and oppression of LGBTQIA+ individuals, and heartily celebrates each LGBTQIA+ student, staff member, and family member as valued members of the Pedaluma community. And by recognizing Pride Month, we support other policies, practices, and curricula that honor and respect LGBTQIA+ students, staff, and their families. And be it further resolved that Pedaluma City Schools hereby issues this resolution in honor and recognition of June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, along with recognizing Harvey Milk Day on May 22. And be its further resolved that Pedaluma City Schools hereby directs all district sites to fly the pride flag starting May 22 on Harvey Milk Day through the month of June and every future year from May 22 through June.
Thank you, Sheldon. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Can I just say, I'm out here, can you hear me?
Hey.
Here in the.
Thank you for that. Yeah. It was really, really moving. Well done.
And I have a quick comment. We pass these resolutions, and I'm really hoping by passing these resolutions that we draw attention to the issues that members of the LGBTQ community, the Jewish community, the AIP community feel feel. I'm losing my words because I'm like Caitlin, I'm about to cry. But anyway, and that our schools also celebrate these groups by learning about them in history, reading literature written by Jewish writers or Asian writers or gay writers, so that it's not just a bunch of empty words.
I will say, last year when we passed this, a very similar resolution, it was the only time I've seen one of these resolutions get backlash. And that was really painful. And so I'm excited that we can do it again and fly the flag even earlier, so more students see it.
And understand the contributions Harvey Milk made.
Anyone else before we move on? All right. Okay, um, approval of resolution 2223-28.
Slower, less moving.
Mitigation plan.
I move to approve resolution 2223-28.
A second.
What should we know about this one, Chris?
Why do I always follow?
Give us an impassioned speech about hazard mitigation, will ya?
My items are the most mundane. I'll be an important, I'll be an important. This has been a long time coming. They've been working on this since well before the pandemic. This is multi-jurisdictional. The county hired a team of people to come in. I attended a few meetings pre-pandemic, I'll be honest with you, pandemic hit. And we focused on our own crisis, which was surviving the pandemic. They did a lot of work in really coming up with a solid plan across all of the school districts and other organizations across the county. It's quite comprehensive. I would encourage people to read it and take a look at it. There's lots of maps and other things in here. I will not go through the whole thing. You're asking each school district to review it and for the board to take action on it so that we have this plan. Talks about wildfire mitigation. It talks about a lot of different types of things, the science behind atmospheric rivers, et cetera. We're we're super fortunate here in Pedaluma that we've really kind of been an island for many of the natural disasters that Sonoma County has experienced. But I can tell you, as someone who's been here since 1979, that was not the case. You know, we experienced hundred-year floods three, four years in a row back in January 1 of 82, and then in 86, and then in 91, before the Army Corps of Engineers came in and reengineered the Pedaluma River. And you see the the improvements that they did. And so we've been super fortunate that the Pedaluma River has not flooded since because of those improvements and and knock on wood, of which I don't think there's any around me. Well, maybe the table. We've been really fortunate throughout the wildfires as well. But it's still important that we have these these plans in place. So with that, we're presenting it tonight for the board to review it and to approve it. All right. Oh, you moved to. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, SIP says. And with that, I pass it to Tony. I have, were you gonna say something?
No, I was just gonna ask if there was any particular questions. We did ask this side administration to also be here to help answer any particular questions that I may not be able to answer.
I did notice, like, looking at the student enrollment, there's like a dramatic decrease, like after kindergarten for some of the schools. Like Valley Vista, McKinley McDowell, there's a few that I noted. And I'm just wondering if when when families leave, are we doing any type of exit interviews? Are we asking, I mean, this year we went, yeah, from 44 to 24. Or I'm sorry, last year it was 50 kids and then only 24 of them stayed. We're seeing that pattern every year. So I'm just wondering if that's been done.
Do we do exit interviews?
Or surveying or something to figure out?
I believe that's something that we've been looking to streamline. I know two parts of that is, you know, doing a standard exit from the school site and then even up at the district level as well, having an opportunity to to talk to parents when they decide to leave so that we can, one, gather data, but also to maybe help address whatever concerns they are that we could address and to help them stay.
I also saw some things that were noted in terms of suspension. We talked about suspensions, I feel like, all the time. But our students with disabilities are so below the average in academics, and they have the highest suspension rates. Did not see that addressed in the SIPs, though. Same with BIPOC students continuing to be high, to be suspended at higher rates. And then we even see it, like, the grad rate for our EL students is really low at Pedaluma High. It's 79%, 80% at CASA versus in the 90s for the rest of the student population. And then their suspension rates are much higher than their white counterparts. So I know when I had asked earlier about, like, accountability or I don't know, like, and I know you can't tell people what their goals are, but I'm just wondering if maybe this needs to be like a district goal? Is this in the LCAP? How are we addressing this? Because we see it every year.
So with students with disabilities, I mean, that is one of the reasons why we're in differentiated assistance. And a part of what you'll see in the new LCAP is a new goal specifically for students with disabilities. There's a lot of systematic areas that we need to fix to support our students with disabilities. Everything from making sure that they're getting access to the core, making sure that they have equitable instruction in their core to looking at how we may be, you know, developing our collab classes, RSP support classes, RSP or state skills classes, and finding where we can support the school sites, the staff, and finding out what what resources they need, what additional trainings they need, or what 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 the school sites need to help support those things. All of those systematic pieces will require, you know, unfortunately, things that we can't create overnight. And and also at the same time, making sure that what whatever systems we we do help do to create to help our students with disabilities, inner English learners, and our other students is looking at the system as a whole as well, so that we can avoid being too myopic in regards to addressing any particular group and then creating other issues that come along the way when we when we when we put it against our other systems. So it will take a lot of planning, strategic thinking, strategic planning, collaboration with our with our staff, our union leadership, and our administration to really write the road that we're that we need to to adjust so that we don't just see, you know, a quick growth here, but a continuous systematic growth over time so that we know that it can be sustainable and that it can be effective and that it truly addresses the needs that we're seeing in those particular group of students. So the short answer is, it's going to take time to to move from where we currently are because this has been a systemic problem for years. It is, if we look at the data for the last five, 10 years, it's been stagnant, and those gaps have been persistent. And that's that's a system that hasn't been able to adjust to the needs of our students. And so changing that system will take time, and the things that we're working on will hopefully start to move in that direction.
We're, do we know where these students are going? Like, if they're not graduating, 20% of them aren't graduating every year. Do we know what's happening to them?
I mean, if I needed an answer, no. Some have moved, some left the area.
Okay.
That's some of the research that we've been able to determine because we are following them as best as we can.
Any any other questions or comments about these?
Yeah, Tony, where are where are our charter schools? Their their plans?
The charter schools don't create SIPs, they'll create their own LCAP, and they'll bring those out, their LCAPs to board when we bring our district LCAP.
And then what about our Carpe Diem and Snow Mountain on the next one?
So a part of the review, when I looked at their SIPs, was there certain components that needed to be followed in regards to requirements? And and I think the challenge has, it's been a challenge for for those school sites. And so I'm working with them to to give them a little bit more time to meet those requirements.
You'll see those later.
Yes.
Can you confirm that these are will be made available on each of the schools' websites?
Yes, once they're approved, we can put them up on their websites.
Thanks. If we have a motion.
I move to approve Pedaluma City Elementary District School Plan for Student Achievement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Was that for those for elementary, right?
Right. I move to approve Pedaluma Joint Union High School District School Plan for Student Achievement 2324.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Arts, music instructional materials discretionary block grant funding.
I very happily move to approve the arts, music, instructional materials discretionary block grant funding.
I'll second. Yeah, I think I'd only be happier if it was still that whole 4.4.
That, that too.
All right, all in favor?
I.
I always like you now. All right, next up is PE exemptions.
I move to approve the PE exemptions.
I'll second, sorry. Yeah.
Did you want to tell us real quick about this, Tony?
So, yeah. So we recently, we're under federal program monitoring review from the CDE. One of the one of the areas that they looked at was our physical education program. Essentially, essentially, students who aren't in PE are able to apply certain exemptions from PE, such as athletic exemptions if they're playing a sport and other allowable exemptions that are in our board policy. I mean, in all reality, of all the places I've ever been, districts have never had to bring to board students who qualify for exemptions, unless they were under FPM review, and then the the CD says you need to bring them to board. So essentially, the practice has always been the students have been implied, the the exemptions were always implied. And now we just have to make sure that they've been board approved. So in the list, we don't list the students' names, but we do list their ID and whether or not they received a permanent exemption or an athletic exemption in there. Just so that we can be in compliance or with the CD and and clear are clear the issues that they they said that we need to clear.
We read seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Um, approval of resolution 2223-29.
I move to approve.
And he's not here. For Alan. Are we going to read this out? Okay. Oh, you want to read me it, okay. Go ahead.
Whereas Alan Fong successfully completed his term as student representative to the Board of Education and has performed his duties in an exemplary manner. And whereas Alan is an articulate, intelligent Casa Grande High School student, and his participation and engagement have have been well organized, comprehensive, and delivered with clarity and sincerity. And whereas the Pedaluma City School District Board of Education has welcomed his interest, concerns, and advice in many topics that come before the board. And whereas Alan has been a loyal member of Pedaluma City Schools, demonstrated in his dedication and commitment to his studies, community service, and extracurricular activities. Alan, a top 10 student, is on the wrestling team at Casa Grande, as well as the Pedaluma Wrestling Club. He also participates in Casa Grande's Key Club, Pennies for Change Club, Honor Society, Interact Club, and is an officer of the Health and Sciences Club. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of Pedaluma City Schools, to mend Alan Fong on his for his dedicated service, expresses its appreciation for his warm friendship and extends its best wishes as he continues his education in the fall of 2023 as a senior at Casa Grande High School. Be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution be made an integral part of the minutes of the May 23, 2023 meeting of the Pedaluma City Schools Board of Education, passed and adopted by the governing board of Pedaluma City Schools on May 23, 2023.
Sorry, he's not here. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, up next, approval of resolution 2223-30 for student board member Mia Vaughn.
I'm to approve.
Do you want a second?
I'll second.
Whereas Mia Vaughn's. Whereas Mia Vaughn successfully completed her term as student representative to the Board of Education and has performed her duties in exemplary manner. And whereas Mia is an articulate, intelligent Pedaluma High School student, and her participation and engagement have been well organized, comprehensive, and delivered with clarity and sincerity. And whereas the Pedaluma City School District Board of Education has welcomed her interest, concerns, and advice in many topics that come before the board. And whereas Mia has been a loyal member of Pedaluma City Schools, demonstrated in her dedication and commitment to her studies, community service, and extracurricular activities. Mia, a producer with PHS Trojan Broadcast, a student-led news and announcement platform. Mia also participates in the PHS basketball team, softball team, and the and in the Art of Noise Club and Link Crew. What is that?
It, it's like a music club, but I'm, I'm not in it anymore.
Okay. We'll just pass on over that.
No, that's fine. Don't worry about it.
Now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of Petaluma City Schools commends Mia Vaughn for her dedicated service, expresses its appreciation for her warm friendship and extends its best wishes as she continues on to her post-secondary education. Be it further resolved that a copy of the rev- the solution be made an integral part of the minutes of the May 23, 2023 meeting of the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education, passed and adopted by the governing board of the Petaluma City Schools on May 23, 2023.
I'm gonna miss you, Mia. Oh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I can say we're gonna miss you. All right, approval of resolution 2223-31, student board member Julian Bautista.
I move to approve resolution 2223-31.
I second.
I can read this one too.
All right.
Let's see. Whereas Julian Bautista successfully completed his term as student representative to the Board of Education and has performed his duties in an exemplary manner. And whereas Julian is an articulate, intelligent, snow mountain student and his participation and engagement have been well organized, comprehensive and delivered with clarity and sincerity. And whereas the Petaluma City School District Board of Education has welcomed his interest, concerns and advice on many topics that come before the board. And whereas Julian has been a loyal member of Petaluma City Schools demonstrated in his dedication and commitment to his studies, community service and extracurricular activities. A 4.0 student with 100% attendance rate, Julian graduated last December but remained committed to finishing his term as a student board member. Same one. A talented musician, Julian remains active in the Petaluma community, working full-time and pursuing further education in finance, business and entrepreneurship. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of Petaluma City Schools commends Julian Bautista for his dedicated service, expresses its appreciation for his warm friendship and extends its best wishes as he continues to pursue his life goals. Be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution be made an integral part of the minutes of the 20, May 2023, 2023, May 23, 2023 meeting of the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education, passed and adopted by the governing board of the Petaluma City Schools on May 23, 2023.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yes.
I know from the ether. I, I'm just really sorry I can't be there. You two have just been wonderful members and contributors. I would have hugged you, but I have COVID. And I don't think you would have appreciated it. So. I know. I think all of you are thankful. So I just wanted to express my appreciation and really you, you were wonderful, wonderful members. And I just applaud you and know that you guys are going to do great things. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Maddie.
Well, I wish I could hug you.
There's still graduation.
Well, that's true.
You'll be healthy by then.
I'll be healthy.
Do either of you want to say anything?
Oh, absolutely.
Any famous last words?
That's what I'm known for. All right. Well, this has been a really great opportunity. I'm here for like a year now. So it's kind of sad. What am I going to do every three Tuesdays or so? This is like an opportunity that not a lot of kids get to have in their school districts and it's honestly amazing. We started putting out on Trojan Broadcast if anyone would like to be at next year. And every time it comes on, I just go la, 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 la. I want nothing to do with that. But I'm really excited for who you guys are going to have next year. I have a few people in mind that I actually have been talking to about it. So very, hopefully that you'll get a good one. And I appreciate everyone who's sitting on this panel today and everyone who is here with the district, helping making all these board meetings happen. And I hope you guys can come to my graduation because that would be really cool. Thank you. All right. Thank you guys so much. It was really good working with you.
Any famous, any last words?
I just wanted to say thank you all for the opportunities you guys provided me. I mean, definitely from the start, at first I was a bit intimidated as, you know, never really had an opportunity like this, but it was due to, you know, Greg Stevenson who helped me get through, getting in contact with all you guys and then also while being here, getting, you know, more contacts through other people through the power of you guys. So I really appreciate all your help and for all your time that you guys dedicated just for me. So really appreciate it. So can't wait to see what else you guys do. I mean, as I know, you guys go through quite a lot, as I've seen before. I didn't even know much of what happened through, you know, all the boards. Just figured it was something small. Then, you know, you later after doing, being a part of all this, I definitely come to appreciate all the work you guys done. I mean, you taking contact to the amount of people you guys are probably dealing with roughly, you know, it's like 30,000, which is like half the population of this town. All in the hands of you guys in terms of kids. You know, kids, parents, all that stuff. So it's, it's, yeah, I definitely have a lot of respect for all of you, for all the work you've done. And again, thank you for all the opportunities you've, you've given me.
And we really appreciate that you stuck with it even after you graduated.
Yes.
Of course.
I mean, I've known Mia, I don't know, what were you, fourth or fifth grade, playing basketball against my, my daughters?
Something like that.
So it's amazing. You're the senior. I remember you as a seventh grader at Kennelworth in the band. So this is pretty cool to see you guys at the end of your PCS journey, at least this part of it. So.
Yeah, I'm so grateful for all three of you and all the insight you provided. Just brought up so many things that we never would have thought about and admin never would have thought about or known about. And it's just been great having your voices and I'm so excited to see what's next for all of you. Stay in touch. Come, you don't have to come back on Tuesday nights, but like, you know.
Honestly, we just hired somebody out of San Antonio. She graduated, I don't, I think about 10 years ago. So I fully expect Julian to come back and eventually work his way up to my chair. Unless he's smart and then he won't, but you know, 10, 15 years from now. So anyway. So I'm talking about, so. All right. Um, approval of PBIS contract.
So I move to approve the PBIS contract.
Second.
So we have some information to share with you if that's.
Yep.
Yep. Good. Thank you.
I have someone online and then we have some folks in the audience and we have video for you had mentioned wanting to get here from her. So I'm going to move the move this around a little bit so the folks who are here can speak since they've been here a while. So I just wanted, I think there's been
a little bit of confusion between what PBIS and restorative practices are. I think that those words get interchanged quite a bit. And part of this is to help clear that up, I hope. PBIS is really, it's a problem solving system. It's a structure. It's making sure that our language is consistent, our expectations are consistent, our environment is warm and welcoming. Restorative practices is there to repair the harm that's caused in whatever the, in whatever the situation might be. And some people have been saying that we have stopped suspending that we're letting, that's not true. You'll see that later on. Unfortunately, that's not true. But we have a video of Laura and I'm hoping that Ryan can hit that video mark for me.
Hi, I'm Laura Moiman. I wanted to thank you for inviting me to join this board meeting. I've enjoyed working with Petaluma City Schools for the past year and a half. I'm a consultant and a trainer to schools internationally. And before this, I was a school district administrator in Napa Valley Unified for 10 years. I was responsible for implementing PBIS, restorative practices, social emotional learning and for opening wellness centers to address student physical and mental health needs. As a result, we reduced suspensions by 75% and expulsions by 99%. And we were able to make meaningful and deep connections with students and really focus on changing behavior through accountability and dialogue. At the same time, we saw juvenile arrests drop dramatically. We were recognized by the state of California for having one of the most significant declines in suspensions and expulsions while earning some of the highest school climate scores in the state. All 30 of our schools scored between the 97th and 99th percentile. Many schools struggle with student misbehavior like defiance and disrespect, chaotic environments, inconsistent expectations and strained relationships between adults and students. The solution to these issues is to integrate two of the most widely used school climate and behavior programs in the world, PBIS and restorative practices. So on their own, each of these programs shape school culture and in unison, they create long-lasting, sustainable school transformation. Now, most school staff operate under the mistaken belief that if we deliver punishments and sanctions that are unpleasant enough, students will change their ways. The problem is it just doesn't work. Research shows that using a lot of punitive consequences in a school, it's going to lead to reduced motivation. It doesn't teach new appropriate behaviors and may result in more problems like truancy, dropout, vandalism and aggression. Using punishment has also been shown to have little long-term effect on behavior. In other words, the behavior doesn't change. And to make it worse, we're actually harming our school community by doing it. The bottom line, you can't punish kids into being good. PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And it's not a program or a kit that you can buy. It's actually a list of best practices that lead to safe, positive schools with happy kids and teachers. It's a multi-tiered system of support which focuses on preventing problem behavior in tier one and then adding more focused interventions in tiers two and tier three for students who need more help. Restorative practices in schools are a set of skills to build community and then to respond to tensions and conflicts by repairing harm and restoring relationships. These practices fall in a continuum ranging from low intensity, less planning, classroom-based strategies, all the way to higher intensity, more structured, office-managed strategies. Research shows that PBIS makes schools safer and it reduces problem behavior significantly by creating a culture of consistency and positivity. And research shows that restorative practices increases school climate because it improves teacher and student relationships, improves social skills, decreases bullying and improves equity. In spring of 2022, we started by training school principals through a live webinar series on the antidote to educator stress and presented PBIS and restorative practices as a way to not only help students, but to support the mental health of teachers. A few months later, I came in person and visited each school and did site coaching. And I also trained school leaders on how to rethink consequences in schools to move away from punishment and towards restoration. At the beginning of this school year, 2223, we did a two-day PBIS training with teams from every school site, including teachers, classified staff and administrators. Each site team was given a series of short 10 to 15-minute videos to then train their staff during staff meetings. And that was followed up with ongoing online coaching sessions with me. Each school also had three in-person site coaching visits with me this year. I trained school sites in SWISS, a disciplined data collection system, and I helped rewrite the discipline matrix. And then this winter, we trained teachers in classroom circles in order to build community and to respond to low levels of problem behaviors in the classroom. We also trained administrators and site teams on restorative conferences in a two-day intensive to respond to incidents of significant harm on their campuses. The outcomes you can look for in your schools are improved school culture and climate and improved student behavior. In other words, probably looking for a reduction in suspensions and expulsions. These results depend mainly on the implementation level of the school. Did they meet monthly as a team? Did they engage in online coaching with me? Did they show their staff the professional development videos and so on? As you'll see, the implementation rate as measured through the TFI varies among the schools. It is important to note that PBIS and restorative practices is a three-to-five-year implementation process. The next steps for Petaluma City Schools are first, continue to support school principals and the site teams in their implementation of PBIS and restorative practices. We're going to have a refresh workday for teams in August and we'll continue online and site coaching for each school. Next, we want to increase our focus on getting teachers trained in PBIS and classroom circles. To that end, we're going to have an advanced IIRP training in circles for teacher leaders at each school site so that they can support and coach their colleagues. Finally, we need to train teams at each school site in tiered behavior supports so that when tier one isn't sufficient to support a student, we'll have a team of people ready with organized, evidence-based interventions. I really appreciate this opportunity to share the work we've done this past year and a half with you and for your continued trust and support. The process of changing school culture can feel as cumbersome and as slow as moving a large ship. It takes systems changes, training and coaching support, and frankly, stamina. This year, I've seen your district leaders and your principals work incredibly hard, sometimes even needing to be a little bit brave and take risks with their staff and their parents in order to shift the existing system. Because in the end, we're creating safer, more equitable and more supportive schools. Please feel free to email me with any questions. I'm always available. Thank you.
We also have a couple, we have Jamie Bushman, who's a principal and implementing PBIS, Katie Pachota, who's a secondary teacher. And then we have Claire Spitzer online, Claire Sitzer online, who's a teacher at Pengro. And they were going to say a few words about PBIS. Fortunately, that Laura covered the, a large percentage of my presentation. So I don't have to go into a lot of it, but I will talk about next steps at the end.
So I have to say, I, as a new principal here this year, I was really thankful to have this. I think this was a really nice place to start with my staff and my team and community, like team being parents and staff and students. And we kept in mind that it's, you know, like she said, a three-to-five-year program here. This was not like an overnight fix and it was about the systems. And we spent a lot of time at the beginning of the year just learning this and trying to get, get it all worked in. And then the second half of the system, just experiencing it. And I, I would say that I feel like it's really laid a foundation for us. Like this year, as I'm walking away, I feel like we have this foundation of PBIS, which has given us some basic outlines and boundaries of what we want from our community, like what a positive climate and culture will be for Valley Vista in particular. I mean, all of their voices are part of the system. It's not, it's not just Laura's program coming in. It's not me or my team saying, here's what we're doing. It's really getting all this feedback and deciding like, well, what is a positive climate and culture for us? And we now have this common language that has become the backbone of our conversations and it's guiding how we interact with students, how students interact with us, how they interact with each other. So many of our conversations come back to our values of being safe, respectful and responsible. And we talk about behavior, like would that fall into here? Which part is hard about this? How would that look if it was respectful? And this is from TK through six, that we can just have these conversations and we have this really common language of how we talk about behavior and a common understanding of what we can expect from each other. And then when things go a little awry, because we're all human and sometimes we get a little overexcited. And we're having those conversations around redirection or what have you, it's still the backbone where students are able to reflect or staff even are able to reflect, like, you know, that wasn't my most respectful behi- wording or I needed to be a little more responsible with my schoolwork that day or whatever, whatever it is. So we can bring that language into the restorative piece. But in our day-to-day language, it's just always checking like, oh, is that safe? Nope. Okay, let me fix that really quick. And it's just given us such a strong foundation for like jumping into next year. My team's already talking about what are we going to do next year? How are we rolling it out? What are we improving? What are we going to add to this? So I was just so thankful to have a system like this, like some, some information to come in and to create this culture that is a journey. It's happening. It's, you know, sometimes you wish like for the, the wand and no one seems to have that. So this seems like a good place to start. So thanks. So this seems like a good place to start. So thanks.
And then from a secondary lens, I thought it was important to hear from Katie because she did this work in Southern California and has seen it be pretty successful at secondary level.
Of course. So PBIS is definitely an easier sell for elementary. There's lots of positive rewards. My son goes to Pengrove. He is so excited every time he comes back with his PAW award. It makes sense. The secondary level, it's a little more challenging. It's hard for us to wrap our head around it. And I mean, I have to say, when I began my educational journey teaching, definitely was a naysayer. I was at a school, and I, I knew that the school rule was no skateboarding on campus. All right? So as a teacher, I'm thinking the students know the rules. They know the expectations. So I came across a student who was skateboarding. I said, hey, I didn't know him, but I'm like, I'm cool. I'm young. He'll listen. I said, hey, you know, you're not supposed to be skateboarding. Please walk. And the student, you know, became very confrontational, became very upset with me about it. So I was like, well, that's it. I can't handle this. I just went straight to the dean and said, you deal with this. Little did I know that the universe then eventually put me back into the role where I was responsible for this and really shifted that perspective. And as the school and the high school district I was working at, as we were working at implementing our PBIS system, we really realized how crucial it was to have these clear expectations. And at the end of the day, students weren't misbehaving because they wanted to be bad. They were misbehaving because they didn't have a clear idea of what was expected. And furthermore, it wasn't consistent. Not everyone was holding them accountable. So when I stepped into the dean position in the district, I worked with a team. And we started originally, the California PBIS Coalition does a recognition system every year. They look at your TFI. They look at your suspension data. We originally started at bronze. And in our four years, we were able to move our way up to platinum. In one of my final years, when we were on campus and in person, after we had made videos teaching about this is where our skateboards go, investing some money and getting a place where skateboards could be locked up, I encountered a similar situation. I ran into a student who was on their skateboard, and very confidently, I felt like I was able to say, hey, remember, we're not supposed to be skateboarding on campus, to which the response was, oh, my gosh, miss, I'm so sorry. I forgot. I was just trying to get to class on time. So it was just a complete shift. It made teachers more confident and willing to engage with students when they noticed a misbehavior, and it made students just aware of this is what is expected of me. Now, the skateboard example, it's a very small one. We definitely could go into these larger situations. But for a high school teacher, when we're thinking about these day-to-day encounters, those are the things that are most meaningful. And there's this big conversation right now when it's coming to misbehaviors. It's, do we need a bigger consequence or a bigger hug? And really, what's nice about PBIS is that it's a balance between the two. We need to make sure that we have high expectations for our students, but we're also helping support get them there. And on my final note, as I mentioned earlier, it's my son's birthday today. And honestly, like, talking about PBIS and advocating for PBIS is the only thing that would keep me in a board meeting this late. It's, I mean, my friends are already like, oh, you must be talking about restorative practices if you're there. And I'm like, yes, I am. But especially having my son and seeing how PBIS is already so significant for him at Pengrove and knowing that both of my children are going to be able to grow up in this. I mean, that's something worth fighting for. That's something staying late at a board meeting for. All right. Thank you.
I owe your son ice cream, I think. I feel, please tell him I'm sorry. Can you promote Claire?
Hi, can you hear me? Can you see me? Great. That's fine. Good. Okay. My name is Claire Sitzler, and I'm happy you had the opportunity to hear great things about Pengrove because I'm going to be talking about us and our PBIS program. But first, so you know who I am. I've been teaching for seven years and five years with Petaluma City Schools, first as a special education teacher, and now as a reading specialist. And as a member of the PBIS team at Pengrove, I decided that more than just my voice should be heard. So I spoke to several teachers at Pengrove about their experience with PBIS this year. And here's what they report. Also, I'm a little nervous, but I'll calm down for you. PBIS has provided clear, explicit, and consistent expectations framed in a positive way for school-wide. Our school-wide expectations are explicitly taught and displayed throughout our school for the community to reference. In addition to visual cues on campus, we utilize sign language to remind ourselves daily what it means to be safe. And if you could see now, I'm going, be safe, be respectful, and be responsible. Pengrove utilizes PAW awards, which you've heard about, to positively reinforce students for following these expectations. Students appear motivated by PAW awards, and positive reinforcement helps to engage students in the desired behavior. For example, if a student is walking in the hallways, we reward them with a PAW award saying, you're being so safe in the hallways. Here's a PAW award, thank you. And other students around them, if they were running, would probably end up walking, and we would then reward them as well for following along and with our expectations. Each Wednesday, teachers draw a name from their collection of PAW awards for all the students that they have provided PAW awards that week. And students select a prize and that they've earned so that they feel really bought into the system and are reminded again that they're following in the expectations. In addition, community circles are facilitated in most classrooms daily, offering a space for community building, problem-solving, and engage in social-emotional learning. And just breaking from my script, this is like the biggest part that people have spoken positively about. It's like an easy way for us, an easy win every day to make sure every student's feeling heard and seen, and we can problem solve in the moment within these circles. And when conflicts arrive, teachers and students utilize statements, sentence frames such as, I feel, or what I need from you now is, to be able to be heard and as a roadmap to navigate through big feelings and peer conflicts. This has been especially helpful after recess, as you can imagine. Finally, as a tier-two support, which as you could see from Laura's is the second tier. All the things I've talked about was the most bottom. It's supposed to be for everybody. The next tier up is for a small percentage of students receiving individualized support through what is called check-in, checkout. We pair a student with their, quote, cheerleader, who reminds them of their daily goals, celebrates them when they accomplish their goals, and reflects with the students more on difficult days. Personalized goals are designed between students and their teachers and are around be safe, be respectful, and be responsible. Then the teachers track the student's behavior on a visual schedule so that the student and the teacher are able to communicate about what's going on throughout the day. Through this process, our school has seen seriously positive behavioral progress. I can't bold that enough for students participating in the check-in, checkout program. As a student experience, as students experience success, we slowly exit students from check-in, checkout. And just a personal note, I have two kiddos that are on check-in, checkout. And not only has it helped them to, like, have more positive days at school, it also helps them to have somebody on campus who knows what they're working on and that can support them throughout the day. Check in with them, see how they're doing, literally be a cheerleader. In conclusion, PBIS has been a positive addition to our school culture and community. It has provided universal language across all grade levels and staff, very clear expectations for our community as a whole, and reminds everyone on campus what it means to be a Panther. There are, of course, growing pains and things we need to work on. But overall, PBIS has been a positive support to our school. And then finally, I feel really thankful that we have Carly Hart leading us because of her extensive background in PBIS and restorative practices. She has been our cheerleader this whole year, and I truly don't think we could have made it this far without her in terms of PBIS. So thank you.
Thanks, Claire.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll just share a couple of slides with you. As you know, there are growing pains with this. It's a three-to-five-year implementation. And that stoplight that kind of red and yellow, we hope to see some more green next year, but schools have made tremendous growth. Okay, can I advance it? Okay, so as I mentioned, one of the things that has not shifted yet is our suspension rate. It's actually gone up in elementary school. So it's something that we're working on, but it is part of this growing that we're going through. Our secondary has stayed consistent, but we have had an uptick in our elementary suspensions. We're also seeing some extraordinary behaviors that we hadn't seen in the past. And I think you could talk to any educator, and they'll say that, and that's a result of many, many things. The LMFTs and I are meeting to come up with some different ideas on how we need to get bold and braver about what we're doing and consider other ways of addressing what we're seeing. So we're starting that conversation, and also we are working on providing more professional development for our classified staff and our certificate staff. So that'll happen this coming year as well. The other data point I wanted to show you is we use what's called a school-wide information system. And that tracks our data in a different way that Ares doesn't allow for. This tells us where it happened, what time it happened, what day of the week it happened, what the offense was, what grade. And then it tracks the students and the number of referrals that each of the students have. So it just gives us a different way of looking at it, and people can understand this data a little easier than when you're looking at it through Ares. Some of the obstacles to implementation this year, I always like to, I'm not, it's not just a rosy picture, right? We've had, you've heard that there are some things that are not working. It is a three-to-five-year implementation. The majority of our principals and leadership teams were new. We had planned staff professional development around staff meetings. And those were an hour a month, so it didn't allow for staff to be able, for principals to be able to use the video series. So we're going to try that again this year. And also, I'm developing a progress, some kind of progress monitoring and system to be able to check in with principals this year. Aside from the TFI, which is done twice a year, that's not enough. There needs to be some ongoing check-in. Again, just what we're going to take on next year, tailored webinars, restorative practices for ninety to one hundred and thirty-five staff. And then we are also talking to Community Matters, which is another organization that are going to help us with additional staff because we don't have the capacity to be able to do the number of staff members we have with one trainer. In-person onsite coaching, the video series, and then clear expectations. And then the additional, as I mentioned, oops, I put that twice, restorative practices. So we just wanted to give you an update on what we've been doing because I also realized that you had not any information from us. So thank you for supporting PBS and restorative practices. I think it will make a difference. It's just not immediate. Thank you.
Thank you. Some questions? Are we open for questions? Couple of questions. Carly appreciated her descriptions of the tier-one and tier-two support. Can you give us some insight on what tier-three looks like? That's what we hear about a lot.
Well, there are a lot more tier-three behaviors than we've seen in the past, and I think that's what we're hearing so much of is that really high escalation of behavior. Tier three is counseling. That's when we refer to counselors. That's when we may do an SST, or there may be more intervention outside of, I mean, the check-in, checkout is what you're trying to do when you're, you know, building those relationships. But a higher level of intervention would include counseling and that kind of support.
Thanks. And the other question I had, I think I saw it on the last slide. I wanted to ask about classified staff. So I mean, what I'm hearing is our consultant, you know, can train site trainers and teams. So can you give me a sense of what a site team looks like in terms of, you know, teachers, administrators, and classified staff involved?
Sure. So the PBIS or Culture and Climate Team consists of the principal, usually a gen ed teacher or two, a classified representative, which is often the student advisor, but not always. Somebody from the sped ed department, and the counselor is usually the makeup of the team. I use my leadership team. I used all gray. I had a gray level representative. Everybody does it a little differently, but I wanted more representation. And to your question about the classified staff, Community Matters is going to come in and help us with, we are going to be able to offer something in August to forty-five classified members in restorative practices.
You know, I think, just to add on to that, my too, you know, to answer your question, we need to make sure everyone's speaking the same language. So our cafeteria assistants in the lunch line, right, in the breakfast and lunch line, out on the playground, out on the yard, in our libraries, there needs to be that consistency and that it's clear that everyone knows here are the expectations. And that will help. It's not going to solve everything, and that's why we have to. So anyway.
So how is that, I mean, I was struck by the consultants. She said something like, you know, sometimes it's the adults that are, you know, that need that correction. And so how do you get that? How do you move from the one hundred and forty-five, whatever, people that we're going to be training up through directly to everyone onsite is on board? How do we move from one to the other?
Yeah, it takes a while to get there. The adults are often the hardest ones to move, right? They're not, I mean, it's, it's when you're, especially when you're in a stressed situation and you're dealing with a behavior, sometimes you default to what you know. So learning new ways of managing is not, it takes a while. I can honestly say that by the time we were in year three or four, I had ninety percent of the staff. I'm not, I mean, we had a couple of holdouts here and there, but for the most part, I'd say, because it was working. People started to see that it was working and that that was making a difference. And I was down to maybe four kids who took up the majority of my time.
And tell me about that dissemination. Is it, you know, in staff meetings, the site teams?
Yes. Yeah. And Laura will come in and do like what I used to have her do because where I had some of the most challenging issues were on the yard, right, in that unstructured time. So I had her come in and spend two hours with my classified staff, right? She'd provide them with some information, and then she'd go out and watch them and observe them and whisper in their ear and try this, or have you considered that? Or, so there were other opportunities for, we created more opportunities for her to interact with staff. Particularly because classified staff, as you know, is not always involved in the training. And so I think Matthew and Chris and everybody has created some more space for classified staff to be able to be trained. So they're going to get some equity work as well, too, with first water, and they'll get some PBIS and restorative practice work as well.
I think finding the time has been the biggest challenge. How do you find the time to train eight hundred and fifty-nine hundred people within our system when you, when, to be effective, forty-five people is sort of the maximum number that you can train. And so that's where we're looking at, to get us trained up, it's going to take, it just is going to take some time.
Is any of the training, because I talk about safe, positive, respectful school environment. So I'm just wondering if any of the training has to deal with any issues of racial bias, homophobia? There's been, it just feels like there's been an uptick in anti-blackness behavior and use of the N-word. I mean, we saw how emotional everyone got when the resolution was being read. I mean, just, it's just what's going on in the country right now. Is that being addressed? Because I just don't see how you can have a safe, positive, respectful environment if you have that language going on on your school campus.
If we had messed up the hate-motivated behavior item earlier, you would have seen the policy. I think that plays a big part in doing that, that there's really a zero tolerance for that kind of language. We're also looking at the LGBTQI-plus policy to see where that lands. But I think it's that board policy that helps support people. And actually, through that policy, there are some direct actions that can be taken. And the other piece is the data collection that happens with, that's the SWISS system that you saw, really allows you to drill down and see what some of those behaviors are. Yes, we are seeing a tremendous uptick in hate-motivated behavior. And I think that's a big part of the reason that there was an urgency about changing the board policy and making sure that it had some more, that it was stronger. But one of the, I mean, PBIS and the SWISS and the data collection does start to uncover inequitable practices because you're starting to see areas that are, become more problematic for whatever that reason may be. And you're able to really identify what the situation is a little more deeply. more problematic for whatever that reason may be. Um, and you're able to really identify, um, what the situation is a little more deeply. The other piece that needs to be addressed is our students and how we're addressing and educating students around hate motivated behavior. And that's the other piece that needs to be addressed.
And making sure that it's clear for our adults. What, what is the clear, what is the expectation on the campus? And interrupting that behavior consistently, interrupting it and calling it out.
We have, um, we have a handout going out in all the student, um, handbooks about hate motivated behavior and what you can do. We also have a new form that, um, you'll see at the next board meeting. That is how you investigate so that, um, I think it is one of the attachments that made it in there. How you investigate, uh, a hate motivated act. So there are some tools that the administrators, uh, will have to, um, help support this work.
I mean, look, I'm on board with all of this. I really am. But just as a parent of black children, I just feel like, I don't know. I just would love to see it more explicit. I mean, within PBIS. Is that, it doesn't seem like to be part of any of the trainings.
Yeah, um, it's a good point. Which I don't have an answer to right now.
And then in terms of like the, the high schools, the secondary, I didn't even see CASA had their numbers up there. So how do we know?
That was done, she did that video a couple of days ago. CASA's numbers are in, were in this morning.
Okay.
So, um, before she made, when she made that video, it was prior to CASA's numbers being in. I can, um,
And it's fine if you have them. I just want to make sure that like we have accurate data for all of the school sites.
Yep, they are, they are, they are done. All the schools are.
I just don't want us to get into the like touchy feely, but not really to like the root causes of what we're addressing with the PBIS. And for a lot of students, that's what it is. I mean, like we're hearing crazy numbers. We're looking at the youth truth, data and how, you know, our black students are feeling on campus. Thirty percent of them aren't even in our schools. They feel safer being homeschooled. I just would love to create the type of environments that they feel welcome to come back to. I don't know if this has to all fall on PBIS, but I just feel like it could be.
Well, I think it also has.
Yeah, the restoration.
Yeah, the rest, I think it's, I, that I really firmly believe it's all three things that we're doing. It's PBIS, it's restorative practices. And it's the work of examining our biases and the way we do, do things. I think all of those things have worked together. We, it's just doesn't happen, unfortunately, it doesn't happen fast enough.
Is there the, do you feel like people are willing to have these restorative, uh, circles?
I, so I have almost forty-five people signed up for the advanced training. So I think that there's, there is an interest. And then we have another forty-five signed up for the baseline. So the, as it's being offered, people are, are signing up for it. Um, I think where our circles are harder is in the secondary and creating that space for that to happen. Um, I think Katie, who's at her son's birthday right now, probably has some ideas on how to do that. And I'm excited that she'll be, um, an intern that we can tap to use at a secondary level. It's finding the, it's that connection over content, that balance of finding out of making that work in a classroom setting. And I understand it, they're under great pressure to deliver content. But we also need to support connection.
I mean, just because in here it refers to our board goal of equity and inclusion, but I don't see in here where that equity inclusion is in the PBIS, I guess. That's, that's all.
Thank you.
Um, I, I have a quick comment. I, I really appreciated, um, having personal statements come from different, you know, like secondary and Peng Grove and, oh, somebody else. I forgot. I'm sorry. Yes, yes, of course. That, um, and I really, I, you know, I'm, I, I, I understand how it's a long process. I understand how it, you know, that foundational work that, um, that they spoke about, the fact that you have common language and that that feels like it's taking hold at least at the, at the elementary schools. So I guess what I wanted to comment on was just a couple of things about the fact that I still have, I'm still skeptical. It's things like, like some of the questions that have come up just now that if Laura was here, she could address. Why is there not any, you know, our, our issues are race-based, are homophobia. And and yet she's not here to be able to answer these questions for us about how her program can change. Can it change? Can there be adaptations for our particular district if we're paying her a hundred thousand dollars? So that's where my skepticism is, I guess. I, I hope you understand this. I, I think that the basic program is, is is good. I, I, I like what I hear, but I also know that we have these outrageous uh, actions in terms of behavior. So when she's saying that it's been successful the last, that she's been here for a year and a half and you know, it's, it's all great. And I'm going, well, it sure doesn't sound like it from the texts I get. So, um, uh, that's, I just wanted, um, it seems like it's the places where it's working really well or where there's a lot of confidence in the staff is where you have uh, somebody there that's really familiar with it, with a PBIS program. And so you guys are doing all the work and that's, that's really my hesitation. Um, I wouldn't be against renewing it, but I certainly want to keep an eye on it. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maddie.
On those issues and those last two comments, how much opportunity is there to have Laura tailor the training to our specific needs?
I think there's quite a bit of opportunity. That's, I mean, that's what the foundation of PBIS, tailor to the environment that you're working in. I think there are some principles that need to be held, but I don't, I don't think that it's a problem. I mean, I'll have a conversation with her about the feedback tonight.
Thank you. I know this is a lot of work to compile. I appreciate it. Appreciate all the information. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Did we already move it? Favor? Okay, AR fifty-one forty-five point nine.
Don't we have a public comment?
Oh, we do. We will open the chat for a little bit if anyone literally, if there's any comments from the public on our, our discussion slash information item.
And I really think this, this item, we're, we're going to bring it back to the next meeting because we pulled the board policy. So the AR is going to come back to the next meeting really for discussion. So it's not really.
Are we pulling it?
Do you want to turn it to me now so I can make the changes?
Before the next meeting.
Why don't you email them to her? Or you want to?
Okay, well.
So you want to see?
The best way.
Let's see if we have any comments from public.
But I, I can do it now while we're waiting.
I'll move to table until the next meeting and someone needs to second and then you can make comments. So I moved to table, I moved to table administrative regulations five one four point nine to the next meeting.
Okay, well, I, I sent you an email about my, my concerns. It was, I, I can.
We need a second.
Also.
I can it's just, um, reading through this.
Wait, we're tabling it.
Oh, we're tabling. So all in favor?
So.
It'll give you time to speak with her about it.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you including us on the email.
Future business.
Future business.
It's, I just want to add, so item twelve, or sorry, item twelve point, two point seven, the one that, um, Caitlin pulled, the award of contract, um, for the building demolition site work of the new modular classrooms at Penningham Elementary School. We have a, we're in a situation right now where the, the, the top bid, we're not sure what's going to, we're, we're not sure if they're pulling or not.
Let's say the low bid, not the top bid, the low bid.
The bid that was selected.
The apparent low bidder.
So we pulled that and so really doesn't really matter if we have to have, we need to have a special board and do an emergency meeting.
Yeah, so may I, may I clarify? So in order to keep the project on track, we have to have a bid awarded for the contract this week. And, um, there's some question about whether the apparent low bidder has a mathematical error and can can, um, is going to pull the bid or not? So we'd like to have a special meeting, emergency meeting on Thursday to either award, ask for, toward the apparent low bidder or the next of it.
Okay, so it would be Thursday, five o'clock. We'll, we'll know by
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow afternoon. And then we'll be posting it twenty-four hour notice to public. It's a ten minute, it's a ten minute meeting, so.
Yes, please. We just, it's for the demolition site work for the Peng Grove project and we have to keep that project. It's a very tight schedule.
Yes. Okay. I, I got an item. Uh, so in light of all our public comments about athletics, there was one issue, or there several issues there that were really compelling, but you know, uh, the transportation one we've heard with, uh, you know, all the extracurriculars, not just athletics, but field trips and everything. And I totally agree that the risk that we're taking is just unacceptable. So I'd like to see some kind of, I don't know what it is, but it's, it's probably budgeting issue. But I'd like to see the transportation, uh, solution there somewhere, or maybe the solution is getting enough bus drivers that are hired. Part of the, yeah, yeah. Yeah. And then, well, and then the equity issue, we've already had our special study session on it, but we, we need to formulate some kind of action plan on that. So particularly, so specific to transportation for now, yeah, for now, yeah. Of course, yes.
And I, I, um, yes, I'm already talking to, I mean, we're, we're planning on bringing back an appointment of the new director who we had a process and so on and so forth. And we have a retired interim who's helping out. So I'll be talking to them about kind of next steps and trying to identify some ideas on that. It, it's a complex issue and the solutions will be complex. Um, to quote my tape, they will take time. Thank you, Sheldon. I think also related to that and what we've spoken about before at the equity meeting, I would love to just have an audit of the boosters and all the sport, all the sports money that's being raised and spent. Um, it sounds like people have different ideas of what of what's the actual cost is. Doesn't seem to be like a clear, I
And different bodies, like physically collecting the money and like what?
Yeah.
What?
I have three kids that play.
Somebody's going through RevTrak, some's going to
Right.
Coaches, some's going to boosters.
Right. And we're being told different things, like it's going to transportation, but we never had a bus. It's going to pay for referees. I'm hearing that the district pays for referees. It's going to pay for uniformized and the school providing uniforms. So I'm hearing different things. I would just love if we could see all of the money, the boosters, the donations with, along with our budget. And just get like a real feel for the actual cost and how much money we have and how much we're really spending like, you know, football, are we spending really three hundred per student athlete? Where softball, we're really only spending, you know, a hundred per student athlete, but we're asking the same amount from each family.
I mean, I used to, I spent my entire career.
I spent my entire career fundraising and it all had to go through student body and they, the student body funds are audited. So I don't understand why there's, there's so little transparency. So just to be clear, associated student body is not athletics. It's raised by kids, spent by kids, not teachers and not coaches, certainly. So it should be kept separate. There are many organizations where that gets a little gray, shall we say, but in this district, we try to keep it very separate. I, I think that Matthew and I can have a conversation about kind of how to think about what your interest is and try to come up with some sort of plan. On a happy note, thank you, CASA is getting a bus for prom. So you know, I feel like if, if, and I know that's been said.
Both schools.
They got a bus.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we asked for a bus and it was given. So it's like, I'm just wondering why that message isn't coming across like to the coaches and the admin to request buses. I, I don't know. I'm just, I guess I'm frustrated.
Well, we're increasing, we're increasing district contribution to transportation because we have a massive shortage of bus drivers. So we're increasing the contribution to each school site, right? So to the tune of seventy thousand dollars across the district, thirty thousand each high school, five thousand the junior highs. This is brought up by the parents. We, we know that's not enough to fund like all of it, but it's a, it's a start. At least it's a recognition that we don't have enough bus drivers to do all the sports field trips. So when you, when you request a bus, but there's a sports event out in, you know, Napa, that's going to be a dangerous drive. The athletic directors, principals should be using that funding to pay for a bus to take students so that we ensure that they're safe. If it's for Pendle High School, school students to go to CASA to play, you necessarily need a bus.
It, I think, I think it's really intended to be a bridge
Yes.
and a stopgap measure to buy ourselves time to come up with a longer term plan.
Right.
And to try to find more bus drivers, et cetera, et cetera. So I mean, it wasn't intended to be the solution. It's really a bridge. While we tried to develop a longer term solution, I mean, that was kind of the idea. You know, and again, we have a, this massive transition going on in the transportation department. So I do, we have lots of ideas. There's, there's, there's a benefit in having fresh eyes coming in to take a look at the, the problem. And I, and I, and I have confidence that there are some solutions and we are seeing a shift in employment. We are seeing a shift in people having more interest. And, um, and we have finally given raises, which I think is also helping us remember we had three years of not giving raises. We had a real challenge in being able to recruit. So I, I do think that we're, um, we're actually in positioned well to start solving some of these problems.
I think Joanna's question was more like, do coaches and principals actually know about it and are they going to be able to act on it and request it? And how are we supporting them so they know that they can at least ask or have like, have they all checked out?
Like I, four sports this year between my kids, secondary level, and none of the coaches requested a bus for anything. We're not asking for a bus for everything, but
Well, we're just rolling it out. We're literally just. Right. So can we make sure staff knows, I guess, right?
Yeah, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, now, yeah.
We just met, we just met with the principals to talk about the new money, but principals.
But when I asked about it a couple of months ago, I was told that the coaches needed to ask for the buses. But it sounds like they weren't asking for buses. So do the coach, like, I, I guess and maybe we need to get some clarity district wide on here is the process for asking for the transportation. Because even if we put the money into it, are they going to ask for it? Is the question that the parents are asking.
Been in a massive transition because our director of transition, our director of transportation resigned in March. So there has been this, I would say this, this period of time where there has been some challenges. So I, I I don't want to understate that. So I
So I, I, I don't want to understate that. So I, I do think that there's been a gap in. I don't know all the challenges. Then when she came to speak, she said that if people ask, then they can work with them. So I guess that, yeah, she did say that. I guess moving forward, it would just be great to get some clarity. Cause yeah, me as a parent, I don't want to put my kid in a car with someone who just got their license or with some random parent that I don't know.
And sixteen-year-olds are not supposed to be driving with their kids.
Well, they can go with their sibling, which is what my kid did this year, but. All right, any other future business? No? Okay, oh, we better report at a closed session. So we took action on item four point one. I don't even know how to report this out, Caitlin. I want you to do it. On confidential student discipline matters, we approved all three by a vote four to zero.
Yes.
Okay, and with that, we are.
Just real quick, just want to, um, just do a special appreciation for Kylie Minto, who is, she just, she's going to be the, um, senior school secretary at McNear. And so this is, this will be, this is her last, um, board meeting.
Oh, Kylie.
Oh, Thursday, that's right. Oh, yeah, Thursday, ten minutes. Regular, regular board meeting.
All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, Kylie. We'll see you on Thursday.